All right, call this meeting to order at 6:47. We have an invocation, we have Thomas Weissbecker, Representative, he's the congregation director for the Universalist Unitarian Church of Santa Paula. Welcome, Mr. Weissbecker. If we can ask you to please stand, make sure your cellphones are turned off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Whoops, hold on here, let's get this going again. We have technical difficulties. Oh, come on now. Wouldn't you know it.
You can wing it. You can wing it.
Okay, my apologies. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city clerk, manager, attorney, staff, and all friends, everyone in this chamber and online, may your hearts be at peace before we engage tonight in civics and politics together. Grounded in this moment, grateful for the gift and the miracle of this gathering, let us take a deep and mindful breath together. Holy Spirit of life, known by many names yet beyond naming, let us call now upon our better angels and upon the wisdom that moves through every tradition, through the hearts of all people of goodwill everywhere. At this council, as this council comes together to serve we, the people of Santa Paula, may they be guided by compassion, courage, and clarity, and may the words spoken here tonight reflect our highest aspirations for all who call this great city home. With peace and love in our hearts, let us celebrate the fantastic variety and diversity of our great community, and especially tonight, as we each do our part, to lift up the most marginalized and the poor in spirit, including our transgender and non-binary friends and neighbors. By lifting up and celebrating the spirit of Pride Month, let us honor those who have paved the way through sacrifice for the inclusion of all, including those who are different, and with whom we may not always see eye to eye. By lifting up the legacy of all of those who led and those who lead by the example of their love, in spite of generations of hurt and hate, may those from this beloved community who speak here tonight be heard, and may those who listen do so with open minds, and may all feel welcomed, safe, and respected in this chamber and in our city. May it be so, namaste, ashé, and amen.
Thank you very much, I'm gonna ask council member Cornejo to lead us.
With pleasure. Please join us, put your hand over your heart, repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated. Ms. Latchaw, can we do the roll call?
Councilmember Crosswhite.
Here.
Councilmember Cornejo.
Here.
Councilmember Ornellius.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juarez.
Here.
Mayor Chavez.
Present.
All present.
Thank you very much, we are moving on to public comment, we're gonna invite Ms. Girardi.
Mr. Mayor, closed session.
Uh, sorry, can you, Ms. Castillo, provide a closed session report?
Yes, gladly. This evening, City Council convened it to close session, on the agenda was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6 designated city representatives, our chief labor negotiator, Irma Rodriguez Moisa, city manager Dan Singer, finance director Kristi Ramirez, human resources administrator Lorena Alvarez. Employee organizations concerned were Community Services Officers Association, Midmanagement Association, Professional Supervisor Association, Service Employee International Union, Local 721 SEIU, Santa Paula Police Officers Association, and unrepresented employees, executive management, confidential employees, and part-time employees. There were no reportable actions taken this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo, we're gonna move on to public comment. You have three minutes, we'll call your name, we invite Ms. Girardi, Mr. Gayun, and Ms. Brittany Boswellaski.
Good evening, thank you very much, and thank you so much for taking us quickly. We don't want to take a lot of your time, the main reason that we are here is just to remind you and everybody out there that there is a new location for fireworks this year, it's at the new community park, and so don't go to the place that you've gone for years, they should be great. We've been doing fundraising in the community, and I want to thank all of the people who've donated so far, and suggest that if you still want to make a donation, we're happy to take it, but we're looking forward to a really nice time, and we also want to mention that this year, there are going to be a lot of activities at the park, so that families can go there for the day, instead of what we did in the past where you just had a few hours. People probably will be the first chance that most of the folks in town get to see the new park in action, and so there'll be food trucks there available for people if they want that, and some games for the kids, some bounce things. Greg, anything else that you want to add and that you have?
Lots of music in the amphitheater, face paint, I think.
So it should be a really bang-up day for Santa Paula. Al, you want to?
I'd like to make sure everybody realizes what we're doing, you notice I'm ready already, I've got my Fourth of July shirt, but the most important part is this one that we're doing, but listen, next year, we're being celebrated in 250 years in this country. Now, we have all sorts of problems and faults and we mess up every now and then, but nevertheless, this is an extraordinary, remarkable, blessed country, and we need to support it in the Fourth of July fireworks, it's a place to do it.
Thank you. Brittany, did you want to say something?
Just hope to see everyone come out, it's gonna be a really great event, biggest one we've ever done, I think it's gonna be really neat for the community, and if you want to donate, please do, where can they send that?
P O B O S E D O nine, or you can give it to one of the three of us.
Yeah, find us, find us, we'll take it.
Right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on to our next speaker, Lali Salgado.
Mayor, if you don't mind mentioning that we do have headphones for anyone that would like to hear in Spanish.
So if anybody needs to mention, si necesitas traducir, servicio de traducir, por favor vaya con la señorita que está aquí enfrente, Julie Latchaw. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez, council members and staff, my name is Sicaleli, and I'm a community organizer with CAWS, who has been working closely with the residents of the 400 mobile estates on Craig Drive over the past few months. I want to thank you for your time and respectfully share some concerns about the upcoming Mobile Home Rent Review Commission hearing scheduled for June 11. We want to acknowledge the city's effort to repair the community's trust. We ask that the city continue to advocate on behalf of its residents for a continuance of the hearing to ensure the process is transparent, inclusive, and consistent with the city's own stated procedures. The city has a document titled Procedure for Rent Increase Request at the Mobile Home Parks, I have it right here, which outlines the steps and deadlines related to this process. In the section specific to this case, it states that the last day to mail the 30-day notice of public hearing with copy of procedures is May 9, 2025. It has now been nearly a month since that deadline, and residents have still not received that notice. In fact, the only reason we even found the notice of the hearing was because we were concerned that we hadn't heard any updates from the residents, which was unusual. That prompted us to check the city's website directly, and only then did we see that the hearing had been scheduled. When we followed up with the tenants earlier this week, they were surprised to hear about it. Most still had no idea a hearing was coming up or what the next steps were. We also want to raise concerns about language access. The notice of hearing states, if you require a translator, please make arrangements to bring someone to assist you. For a community where Spanish is the primary language for the majority of residents, this places the burden of language access on individuals and creates a clear barrier to meaningful participation. We'd like to request that the city provide interpretation services at the hearing to ensure the community can fully participate. There is also currently no staff report available, which limits the ability of residents and the broader public to understand the scope of the proposed rent increase or how their request is being evaluated. Additionally, residents were previously told there would be an appeals process, that now appears to have been a miscommunication, but it's important to acknowledge that it shaped how many tenants approached their involvement. Some delayed action expecting they would have another opportunity to participate. Throughout the process, residents have made consistent efforts to stay engaged, but the key breakdowns in communication, procedure, and access have made that difficult. Given the circumstances, we believe a continuance is reasonable and necessary to bring the process back into alignment with the city's procedures and values. We are committed to working together in good faith with the city, residents, and all stakeholders to ensure that this process is fair, accessible, and respectful to the community's right to participate fully in decisions that affect their homes and families. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. I'd ask the city manager and the city attorney to please connect with each other to follow up in regards to the residents concerned. Thanks. We have the next individual, Constance Machín.
Good evening. It is such a pleasure to drive down Harvard Boulevard. Right?
Yeah.
I understand that this year marks the completion of a five-year management cycle of our streets, right? Right. I also see that no improvements in any of the cycles so far have been earmarked for our little neighborhood consisting of Ernest Drive, Bruce, and Roger Roads, south of the Oaks, south of Say Road, and north of Richmond. The second five-year cycle begins this year, correct? Okay.
Yes.
I want to urge you to include Ernest, Bruce, and Roger Roads in this plan, because these streets definitely need work, and we would be really grateful. And not only that, but we'd really like to know where we are in the lineup, when we're gonna get a little help, I know that there's a lot of need here in Santa Paula, but we'd like to know where we stand, we who live on those streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is an agenda item today where we're gonna be talking about funding options to accelerate our streets, which is a segue into setting priorities for which streets are gonna be conducted, so if you're not able to stay for the whole meeting, we also record it so you can see what we discuss regarding priorities.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have next up, Nidia Bejo.
Is that on time, eleven?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're coming back. All right, next up, we have presentations, I'm gonna start with the presentation to Mr. Ray Frutos, is he in the house?
I didn't see him either.
Is there anybody from the family or that came to honor Mr. Frutos? I know we are all here due to that, but anybody in particular would like to please come up? Yes, please, please, guys. And we'll have, we'll have you represent him tonight, and I'm gonna ask the council members to please read three paragraphs each of this proclamation, so we'll go this way, well, we'll jump and then we'll come back.
So am I starting with the whereas, or do you want me to start with the proclamation at the top?
Whereas.
Okay, well, just so you all know, at the top it says proclamation for Mr. Ray Frutos, for over, I'll just read it, for over forty years of exemplary public service and education, and as a volunteer for the Santa Paula Little League and Santa Paula Mercer Prieto VFW post 2043. Whereas Mr. Frutos served courageously, oh, in the DN region of Saigon and in Cambodia during the Vietnam War as a member of the 11th Armored Calvary, and whereas upon returning to Ventura County after the war, Ray Frutos began gathering first, youth first, in the Ojai Unified School District in 1972, then in the Santa Paula Elementary School District from 1974 to 2010, and whereas his role as janitor meant more than maintenance of school grounds and turned to mentor and role model for generations of youth in Santa Paula, a role that led to the creation of an outreach consultant within the district that was designed with Ray Frutos in mind.
I'll save you, okay?
Whereas Ray Frutos began volunteering for Santa Paula Little League as a coach from 1974 to 2007, whereas Ray Frutos served on the Santa Paula Little League Board of Directors from 1983 to 2007, as he worked to ensure opportunities were made available to countless youth who had limited access to recreational sports programming, whereas after serving as an umpire for Santa Paula Little League from 1974 to 2024, Ray Frutos has impacted countless lives of young athletes who learned to love the game through his work.
Give it to Carlos. Yeah, she's gonna cough it up.
All right. Whereas Ray Frutos joined the Santa Paula Mercer Prieto VFW post 2043 in the mid 1980s, and has played a pivotal role in the organization's philanthropic work, including providing military funeral services to Ventura County veterans at no cost to the family. Whereas Ray Frutos initiated the school-based Veterans Day and Memorial Day ceremonies in an effort to help local youth understand every detail of why each holiday is celebrated. Continue?
Two, a few more.
Okay, whereas a staple in the community, Ray Frutos has remained a steadfast presence in the continuation of community veteran-based presentations designed to educate the community and keep the memory of his fallen comrades alive.
Whereas Ray Frutos has faithfully served his community and beyond, demonstrating unwavering commitment to the growth, prosperity, and well-being of countless generations of youth, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Santa Paula commends and recognizes Ray Frutos for his exemplary service and commitment to the city of Santa Paula, surrounding community, and for fifty years of public and volunteer service. In witness thereof, I here undue set my hand and cause the seal of Santa Paula, California, to be affixed this fourth day of June 2025. I know Mr. Frutos is battling for his life, and he would have been here, and we want to just thank his family, him for his service to this country, to our community, and we are so grateful to have Mr. Frutos as part of the Santa Paula community. So I'm gonna present this to you, I'm gonna ask my council members to please join me for a photo, and we'll hold on to this, because we're gonna do something special, and maybe we can deliver it. All right. Are there any kids here from Little League?
Yes.
Can we ask you guys to hold this? I think that'd mean a lot to him, to see the photo that, as you're holding this, assemble a logice for them, two young people. I'm gonna jump on the agenda a little bit, so I'm gonna invite Eric Sternad to do a presentation on Interface Children Family Services. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, city council and staff really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight to talk about 211 and just provide you our annual update. My name is Eric Sternad, I'm the executive director at Interface Children Family Services, and we have the privilege of operating your 211 Ventura service. This is actually our twentieth anniversary this year. Some of you may know that our 211 here in Ventura County was the first 211 up and running in California twenty years ago, so we're really, really proud of that as a community. So the next slide, please, oh, actually, I should just mention that when we kind of estimated going back, looking at the number of residents across our county served, and we figure it's about a half a million calls that have come in during that twenty-year period of time, so really tremendous legacy of service, and just would not be possible without the support from your city, from the other cities, from the county, United Way, First Five, Public Health, all key partners over the years that really have helped us to make 211 what it is today. So, thank you. So the next slide just shows the kind of general list of programs that we have at Interface, to give you some context, so of course the 211 information assistance work, we also are providing a full range of domestic violence shelter and prevention, child abuse prevention projects. We are coming into Santa Paula schools to do our child abuse prevention work, as well as our teen dating violence prevention, which is free to the school system and the community. We have a robust human trafficking prevention and intervention program that is operated in close coordination with law enforcement, district attorney's office. We have a range of justice service programs, we're actually doing a juvenile youth diversion program that was successfully piloted in Oxnard, and now probation wants to actually deliver that across the entire county, so that will also be coming to Santa Paula in the coming years, we're excited about that. And then a long history of mental health and trauma treatment services, as well as youth and youth homeless services. So just for those who don't know about what 211 is, 211 is a 24-hour contact center, you can reach us by just dialing the three-digit number from any phone, any cellphone landline, you'll reach our staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week, or you can text your ZIP code, if you'd rather, to 898-211, or you can visit 211ventura.org and search for resources yourself. We catalog and maintain a list of all of the health and human services in the whole county, done by county government, by nonprofits, even some faith-based organizations that have social services, we catalog all of that, and we maintain that in a database that's curated, and so this is a little screenshot of what you'll see on the website, so there's some very easy ways to search if you're not exactly sure what you're looking for, that's a great way to search online, or again, the public can call us anytime. We have staff that are ready and willing and able-trained to take calls day and night, and we have about eighty percent of our 211 staff are bilingual, bicultural, so we have plenty of capacity to speak directly in English and Spanish and a few other languages, but then we have a language line that enables us to really communicate in any language that would be presented. So we encourage the council and the public here to help us to get the word out, we don't have a marketing budget, so it's really word of mouth that helps people to find 211 whenever they're looking for any kind of health and human service sort of help. So then just drilling down to Santa Paula numbers, what you see on the screen here are the numbers of callers from Santa Paula specifically in 2024, so you see that there's about 663 total calls that came in, and then we break that down, so you'll see that about a third are first-time callers, so this really is representing folks who hear about 211, they've never tried to call before, or maybe they were reluctant, and someone encouraged them to do that. If you find someone who's in need, someone who's on the street, someone who's definitely struggling, please tell them about the 211 number, that's what we're here for, to really help connect folks to whatever services that are needed. Sometimes people might be focused on a problem that they have, and yet we may know of another resource that they may not be thinking of, like maybe they're looking for housing, but we can plug them in with food support that helps stretch the budget and enable kind of a solution. So you can see that sometimes the solution may come from a different angle, and our staff are really trained to be able to do some quick questions, you know, digest that, and get right down to the topics at hand and where the help might be. So the next page just drills down to really show you where the calls are coming from, and Santa Paula shares this with all the other cities in the county, that housing is the number-one need that people have in the county, and this has been so for over a decade since we've been collecting this data down to this level. So you'll see housing's the number-one need, income support assistance, utility assistance, and so these are some of the types of services that we can direct Santa Paula residents to, and we do every day, and it's our pleasure to work with all of the tremendous organizations that are out there doing great work, and we can just connect the dots and get people to the help that they need. The next slide is a little bit small to read on the screen, but does show you a comparison between where Santa Paula sits in terms of the top three needs compared to the other cities in the county, so you'll see a lot of commonality there, but a few differences, and so it may be of interest to you to look at that, and if you've ever, if you ever want to drill down on the data, then please give us a ring, we're happy, we have, you know, some amazingly trained staff that can walk you through the Power BI reports that are online, you can also see those live online, you can search for dates, you can search by issue, by city, compare cities against each other and the county at large, so there's a lot of data mining that could happen in terms of if you're looking for some policy sort of aids, if that would be so helpful. Then we have some special projects that we're doing, which we are coordinating with others locally and across the state. We provide a Kick It California project where we're connecting people to resources to help get off of tobacco products, and the California Department of Public Health has told us that 211 is actually as or more effective in helping people transition off of tobacco products than healthcare itself, so it's really quite a tremendous accolade for 211 across the state, so that's an exciting program. The public safety power shut-off coordination that we do with SCE here in the south and also PG&E in the north, this was actually a project that Kelly Brown, our chief information officer, and myself spearheaded for the state's 211s. We're now in our, going into our fourth year of that project, and that's been a huge benefit for any family that has any vulnerabilities to a power outage. So if you know families that might be reliant on batteries or electronic equipment, chair, you know, stair lifts, things like that, please urge them to get in touch with us, we can help them do some planning and have a good crisis plan so that if the power does ever get shut off, they know that they can call us, they know what kinds of resources are out there, that the utilities are helping actually to fund and make available for vulnerable residents, so that's really a great, great program when it's needed. We are part of a California versus Hate project now here called Ventura versus Hate. 211 is a reporting line for hate crimes, so it's consistent with your recognition of Pride Month tonight. This is a great service for the public to be able to come forward, report when there's been a hate incident or concerns about that, we can put people in touch with resources that are geared specially to help them, legal resources and other supports. And then last but not least, it may not surprise you that a third of all of the callers that call into 211 don't have transportation to reach the services that are available and ready to help them, and so we're part of a Southern California-wide program called 211 Ride, where we help residents with trip planning and figuring out which buses to use, and we literally get calls Sunday night from someone saying, my car broke down, I don't know what bus is to take, I've got to go from here to there, I don't want to lose my job, I've got to be there at six in the morning, and then we just go through that special calculator with them and give them the exact rise that they need, so it's really a great, a great service for those who are needing some help with transportation. So we have all the other contacts there for the council or for the public to reach out. us if there are any questions. And again, please help us get the word out. Call 2-1-1, text us at 898-211, or go online at 211ventura.org, and we'll be there, day or night, rain or shine, to help you out. So, happy to answer any questions. And again, thank you so much for your support.
Councilmember Crossway.
Thank you. It's not me doing that. I will pass it on to the staff, however, right?
There's one just, maybe first, can we go back to the slide that had the list of all the calls? I was just curious, I was noticing a lot of the other cities' transportation was higher up in the list. And so, I was just, yeah, this one. I just wanted to see. Okay, so, it was 56 of the callers. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Other questions? I just have a couple of questions. One is, have you seen, what trends have you seen over time? Because right now, we're currently getting about 1.8 calls on average a day.
Yeah, yeah.
Over the last five years, is it trending lower or higher? What have we seen?
Pretty consistent year to year in terms of the overall volume from Santa Paula. Again, that housing need is always first and has been for a long time. We've seen maybe last year and the year before, kind of a surge of requests for mental health support, and that seems to have tapered off a little bit, which I think is good and positive. Still, you know, ranks up in those top five, you know, typically, mental health and substance abuse requests for service. So, it was really interesting during the pandemic, which I think is illustrative of the fact that we saw some really huge swings in terms of the focus from the public. And whenever there would, you know, unfortunately, be another crisis like that, I think looking at the 2-1-1 calls in real time is probably going to be very helpful because we almost could predict what kinds of issues people were struggling with. First, it was, what is COVID? You know, how can I prevent myself from catching it? And then, all of a sudden, it was, what do I do with, because my kids can't go to school? And then, it shifted to, you know, my job is shutting down because there's no public to require that business to operate, et cetera. So, I think, you know, we do quite a bit of response for any kind of disaster that happens. So, if there is a disaster in Santa Paula, please count us as your partner. Call us if you want us to pre-position information for the public to receive, and we can help direct traffic in terms of where your public is going and what you need them to do. We only give out vetted information during a disaster that comes from OES, but we could certainly collaborate with your council here if there was a special need in Santa Paula.
And are you still doing the RAC cards?
We are, yeah. We have the RAC cards. We also have business-sized cards that law enforcement also uses, so, yeah.
Great. And then, we'll just make sure that we get some information on 2-1-1 through our social media platforms. Jonathan?
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your presentation.
All right. I'm going to jump back to proclamation, and I'm going to invite the folks that are here for the Pride Proclamation to please step forward. We have the Santa Clara River Valley Pride Committee. We also have One Step Alavas. Don't be shy. And... It's actually quite a special moment to be mayor, to be an openly gay man, and to be able to read this in front of a community that has come together to create more visibility and inclusivity to folks here in the Santa Clara River Valley. So, I was recently informed that I am the first openly gay mayor in Ventura County history, which means that there's progress. And we have many firsts that are happening. We have a new council member in the City of Thousand Oaks, who's a member of our community who was just elected this last cycle. But we, it's not just us. We have opened the door, and it's people that have been doing the work in the trenches, fighting for civil rights, social justice, and for equality. So, it's a privilege to be able to read this to you heartfelt. Whereas, on June 28, 1969, the lesbian and gay community took a brave stand for civil rights at the Stonewall Inn in New York City, marking a monumental step for equality and justice for all LGBT plus people and communities, igniting the gay civil rights movement. And homophobic and hateful rhetoric has led to countless crimes and acts of discrimination, both subtle and overt, against members of the LGBTQ plus community. And whereas, a pandemic brought death and devastation to the gay community with the outbreak of HIV/AIDS in the United States, and due to a slow government response, galvanized LGBTQ plus communities into action by creating a national, state, and local organizations dedicated to the care of those affected and an effective lobby to combat hate, homophobia, discrimination. And whereas, discriminatory laws and policies such as "Don't Ask, Don't Tell," which prevented gays and lesbians from opening and serving in the military in 1993, and the Defense of Marriage Act, which forbade same-sex marriage recognition in 1996, were passed as a country internally struggled to recognize and deal with the rightful societal changes demanded by the LGBTQ plus community. Whereas, a landmark decision in 2003, Lawrence v. Texas by the United States Supreme Court, struck down a law that paved the path forward to marriage equality state by state. And whereas, a tremendous amount of progress has been made since Stonewall, however, members of the LGBTQ plus community continue to be marginalized, face bullying in school, and discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas, each June in the month of, in which the gay civil rights movement began in 1969, cities and towns throughout the United States celebrate LGBTQ plus Pride Month to acknowledge the courage it takes for people to make public and embrace their true self, become respected members of their communities, and promote equal rights for all. And whereas, the City of Santa Paula adhors discrimination of its residents in any form, including race, gender, sexual orientation, religion or creed, and seeks to heal the damage caused by homophobic and discriminatory acts. Pride Month gives the LGBTQ plus community and their allies an opportunity to celebrate equality, acknowledge their contributions to the community, and provide hope for a better future. Now, therefore, I, Pedro H. Chavez, Mayor for the City of Santa Paula, and on behalf of the City Council and the City of Santa Paula, to hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Congratulations. Before I go up and take a photo, I'd like to ask if there's anybody that'd like to make a comment.
Yay. Good evening, Mayor, the City Council. Oh, my gosh. I'm honored to stand here as we accept this proclamation for Pride Month in Santa Paula. Each year that we do this, it's a reminder that visibility matters, especially for our youth. A few years ago, the pride flag was raised in front of the city hall for the first time, and then, a citizen took it down. It has never gone back up. That silence says something, but this proclamation says something louder. It says, "We're still here, we're still showing up, and we're not going anywhere." Even in today's world, where hate and ignorance feels louder than ever, we are louder, we are love, we are joy, and we are truth, and we will not back down. To the young people in this community, especially in the Santa Clara Valley, I just want to say that if you feel like you have to hide, or like the sun won't come out for you, please just hold on, your day is coming. Don't give up, the sun will come out, and you will get to be who you want to be one day. Pride is more than a celebration. It's a resistance, it's healing, and it's a reminder that you belong exactly as you are. With that being said, I want to invite everybody to our annual Family Friendly Pride Celebration. It's going to be at the Palacio on June 22. It's at 11:00 AM. There's going to be resources and music and fun and food, and everyone's welcome. So, come out and celebrate with us.
As co-chair for this, I just want to say, you know, thank you so much, Santa Paula, for opening your doors. You know, it's been such a welcoming experience here, and I just want to say also that this is not a lifestyle. You know, me as being as a gay man, married for 20 years with my husband, and others from the LGBT community, this is how we were born.
So, we're going to turn around. go to consent now, and we'll come back to the reports. We're going to jump to consent item real quick because we have some consultants that are on standby. And are there council members that would have any questions for consent items? If you'd like to call anything.
A couple of questions on... Sorry, thanks. A couple of questions on 10C. And... I think that was it. Everything else I've cleared was staff.
Anything else? All right. So, why don't we just go ahead and ask those questions now?
Okay. I just wanted to explore a little bit more about the program itself. I understand through staff that we have participated with this company before.
Yes.
And they're based in Culver City.
Yes.
So, I was just wondering how, are you familiar with how they hire? Do they hire locally, or do they bring people in from LA too?
They do hire locally. Actually, the current staff for this summer, there's one that comes from out of the county, and the rest are actually from the county. And I believe eight of the employees are actually here in Santa Paula. So, they do hire locally.
Good to hear. And then, we participate with them because we're short on staff ourselves. So, it's my understanding, for while we're doing this, we're kind of contracting with them for the services. Is that because it's, they have a nice laundry list of different classes that they offer that we couldn't?
Yes, sorry. They do have a good menu of classes, like 3D printing and different opportunities. They offer more of the enrichment piece, and our staff does a lot of the sports camps and takes that theme, although we do offer, we'll do like woodworking and some things as well. But they have a good menu. We did partner with them last summer. The district has also used them in the past for some class. So, they help us offer supplemental services. We, it's about 400, or a little over at 400 participants in the summer. So, they have about 200 or so that are in the programs in the afternoon, and then, the other 200 are in our sports camp. So, it helps us supplement the services.
Okay. Just wanted to hear a little bit more about the program before voting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you remind me the amount that we contract them for?
It is for, let me bring it up here. Let me bring it up there. It's around 77,000, 78,000. The cost is reimbursed by the district. It's part of our contract with them for summer services.
Even better. Go ahead.
It's the same program that Aspire, sorry for my voice. Same program Aspire uses, right?
Yes, Aspire has used them in the past.
It just, it'll be just strictly for summer activities?
Yeah, this will specifically just be for the four weeks of summer camp, but they've worked with the Aspire program. I believe they run some sports programs at Barbara Webster. And then, we did have a smaller agreement with them last summer. And this year, because of the size of the contract, it's coming from our council, but we've partnered with them, and we've had some success, or a lot of success with them in the past.
Councilmember?
I just want to say that I was glad to see in the contract that if one of their employees isn't working out, or is creating an unsafe environment or anything like that, we can request that they be removed. And so, I just wanted to say that I was, I was looking for that as I went through there, and so, I was very happy when I got to that point to see that if someone isn't working out, that we have a provision in there.
Yes.
So, thank you.
And they provide all the background checks, and they do that as well that we would require with their staff. And their liaison, I'll call him the person we work with, is always very communicative and very helpful. And we haven't had that issue, but he communicates well with us.
Great. I'd like to entertain, is there a motion to adopt the consent?
I move approval of the consent calendar, items 10A, Adam through 10E, Edward.
Great, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional questions or comments or concerns? See, none? Oh. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 11A. Discussion to amend Santa Paula municipal code chapter 152, Molo Park Rent Stabilization Ordinance to add the right to appeal to city council. Staff?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Council, this item comes to you tonight following a meeting, your last meeting two weeks ago. Future agenda item was requested in a specific context, an unfortunate one, where some miscommunication was published on the city's website describing a, the procedures of a pending rent review application at 400 mobile estates that one of our speakers has already mentioned this evening, that following that miscommunication and confusion, this item was requested so that the city council could consider amending our rent stabilization ordinance for mobile homes, so that not only is there a body, the Rent Review Commission, appointed by council that would review these applications, but also an opportunity to appeal to the city council. I want to clarify one thing. In the document that was published online with the inaccurate information, the information that worksheet stated that appeals were possible to the city council and also had incorrect hearing dates. That is not consistent with what's within our code. So, what's published online, if it's incorrect and in conflict with our code, has no force and is not binding. But it is extremely regrettable that this has created confusion and misunderstanding, and I hope our discussion tonight clarifies some of that. And I do also want to say that because we do have a pending appeal, there's some information I cannot disclose, a pending, I'm sorry, a pending application that's coming to the board on June 11. There's some information I cannot share tonight, or else it will compromise our city. So, with that, this report discusses what options there are and compares what other cities have done with their rent stabilization ordinances. About, if you've got your report, there are about half of our cities in the county, and the county itself has rent stabilization ordinances. I want to also give a little background to this in the larger state context. There are several complex laws that govern mobile home parks, and the primary one is called the Mobile Home Residency Law. And this was adopted in, I believe it was the 78, okay, 78. And then, following that, this, although this code, these new regulations put in place some rules and safeguards and just something that both owners and residents needed to comply with, it does not establish a rent increase maximum. It does not regulate rent. So, because of that, cities took the opportunity... So just very, very briefly, a, an owner, a park owner may increase their rent according to an annual CPI. They don't have to. That's one way. Second way is they can, a park owner can increase rent for capital improvements. Capital improvements are things like adding a pool, adding a playground, kind of the more expensive fixed improvements or amenities to a mobile home park. So they can increase rent to recover costs for those improvements. The third way they can, they can adjust rent is seeking a reduction in rent for a discontinued service or amenity. So if somebody took away the pool from the mobile home park, then they could reduce the rent. And then lastly, and this is pertinent to the proceeding that will take place next week, a mobile home park can ask for an increase to rent to maintain their net operating income. Now each of these have a different way of getting processed. There's a different procedure. And mind you, this, our ordinance is quite old and cities rarely, not only Santa Paula, but many cities rarely have to go through this process. So it is a, a very unwieldy one and one that can be difficult to apply as times evolve. Our ordinance does not allow for, under the, the maintaining of net operating income does not allow for a, an appeal to our city council. What happens is that it goes to the Rent Review Commission, an appointed body of three members. And once they make their decision, that's where it ends. After that point, then either party can go and bring an action in state court, can file a complaint to challenge that decision. So it can either be residents of the park or the park owner, whoever's unhappy with that decision. On the other hand, there are some places that, some cities that have provided for a different structure of procedures. And tonight council is looking to see if we can add another level of appeal from that Rent Review Commission to the city council. I found only one city that does that, and that was Thousand Oaks. And that was pretty recently, in 2021. There, they use their planning commission, also an appointed body, to hear their rent review applications. And then it can get appealed to the city council. But by and large, no other city appeals to the city council. I also want to talk about just a few of the cities outside Ventura County. Again, same thing, very, very few do not have appeals to the city council. But it hasn't, it can be done. Do not, do not have appeals to their city council.
Okay, so most of them do not?
Most do not. And I can tell you as a practitioner that there are, our legal resources are all authored for a board that, or a hearing officer that reviews these applications and not a city council body. So for council's consideration, we wanted to take a look at some of the benefits of being the final decision maker. So if you want to use the board as it is now, or our commission as it is now, as a final decision maker, then it ensures that it is an independent disinterested body. And that is a requirement of a fair due process hearing for both, for both sides. It ensures there's no bias. And you can also have the option, as some cities have done, of using a hearing officer who's specialized, has specialized knowledge in rent review applications and the complexity of mobile home law. And that person is generally somebody who's contracted by the city and comes in occasionally to hear these types of matters. And then we want to also make sure that we have a hearing body that is, has some familiarity with this area of law and also these types of proceedings. So that is one of the benefits of having either a hearing officer or an appointed body with qualified individuals and background in this area to hear these matters. One of the noted disadvantages that were raised was that you're not able to, residents aren't able to appeal or speak to directly to their elected officials. So one benefit to that is that, once it gets to city council, it's possible to create a procedure for them to then send it back to the lower body, the lower decision maker. In this case, it would be the commission if they made a mistake or forgot something in their decision making process. At the same time, you can see that there's a flip of creating the appearance of, of having bias or an interest in an outcome if you are an elected official and there, you tend to speak more to the constituents than an independent hearing officer or an appointed commissioner would. So that's a risk. And I can say that I'm aware of at least one matter that's pending in court where city council members were accused of bias and not acting in the interest of law and instead showing some favoritism to their constituents and not being partial. And so this created more, more trouble in that proceeding. But I also want to qualify that by saying it's a difficult burden to prove that an elected official is, is biased in a decision making body, decision. So it needs to be very overt and, and something that has to be backed up with, with proof. So that doesn't, that does not have to dissuade you from choosing to amend your procedures to create that appeal level. Finally, I just wanted to also suggest, and you'll see in your staff report, a few other options that could be made, can be done instead. We could create a citizenship, a citizen committee and they could review the ordinance and give recommendations about, you know, how these proceedings should take place, who should be represented on a commission. And that would also enable all stakeholders to share their interest and how they might be impacted by such amendments to the procedures. If, for example, adding another level of appeal could create more costs to residents or it could create a prolonged period of uncertainty and unknowing. And that's one area that could be considered and discussed, not saying that that's the driving factor. And the other suggestion or option that council could have in a, as an alternative to having the city council be the final appellate body is having the commission meet more regularly to hear resident concerns, so not just for having applications pending before them, but just for general concerns, have it be another place for them to come to and then, you know, talk about their worries and complaints. And it could also, this body could also provide periodic reports to the city council, as is done in other jurisdictions. So that would maintain that connection between the commission and the city council, which is the elected body. And that would also ensure with, that we create a membership that's made up of individuals with the technical qualifications that are really relevant to the unique field of rent adjustments in mobile home parks. And finally, I just wanted to note that council, at the last meeting and at this, in reaffirming now at this meeting, that any amendments that are proposed to be made are not intended to affect the pending proceedings at 400 Mobile Estates. So if council has any questions, please let me know. And I'm here, and James is here, to answer any questions.
Questions? I asked at the last meeting to make sure, since both of you were not here, that the city manager provide a timeline and an update to you so that you're informed of the justification of how this came about.
I have a technical question. So it says in the ordinance that there'll be three members and up to two alternates. Is there a reason why we have, we don't have alternates for the current commission as it is?
Do you want to, do you want to respond?
I can respond. The biggest challenge has just been finding commissioners. I think we have potentially one alternate, but that's been the challenge with a lot of our commissioners.
I would just also add, we, in the last six years, this is now the second application. So these are rare occurrences. And as a result, the council has appointed members, one of them's actually in the front row here, and served for a number of years, but it, the committee stays largely inactive. So we could certainly have council appoint five people, two alternates and three primary. Or you could even enlarge your board to five, but it would just mean more people that are sitting around inactive. So that's a consideration.
And then my other technical question was that it says in here that commission members and their alternates shall be compensated for their services in amount set by resolution of city council. Did we ever determine whether or not we know what that amount was intended to be that was set by resolution?
We have not researched that unless Mr. Mason's aware. We certainly can.
I assume that since they put it in here, at some point it was set by resolution. And so we should probably...
In addition to inviting them to our holiday party, we might want to look into that to see if they're owed something.
Yes, they've only met once, you know, had one or two meetings in the last six years. However, when they do meet, it does indicate that there is supposed to be a stipend of some kind and we don't seem to know what that is. So it might be something that we need to...
We will research that.
Look into.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, having been here and seen the room filled with people with concerns about this increase in their rent, you know, feel sorry for them and, and more so that, you know, this error wasn't found until this process is already in motion. I would be opposed if we had other council members that wanted to pursue this and talk about it, because there's a lot of people out there that had their hopes that we could do something, but as you know, we can't. And I just, again, want to reiterate what council says, and it's even listed in here, that finally, any updated ordinance cannot apply retroactively. And it says specifically, cannot apply to the pending foreign mobile estates. And I think that maybe the message is getting out that there's really not much we can do at this point, but for the benefit of them listening, so they know that any action that we take is not going to affect them. And that's unfortunate. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
I just want to ask, do we have public comment before we go into discussion? Or what order are we going to do this?
Yes, let's invite that. Thank you.
Unless somebody has technical questions.
Ms. Bayo.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. As you know, my name is Nidia and I'm here as a policy advocate from CAUZ, but also speaking on behalf of residents at the 400 Mobile Home Park, many who are facing the very real threat of 45% rent increase. Most people living there are seniors, working families or farm workers, and they live on fixed incomes. They rely on social security or minimum wage jobs. They bought their mobile homes because it was one of the only ways to become a homeowner. They were looking for stability, a chance to build a future, and they believed their rent would increase slowly, fairly, and based on inflation. Instead, they're being hit with the possibility of a nearly 50% increase during a time when everything else is also going up, groceries, gas, utilities, insurance and healthcare. A rent jump like that means people will have to choose between paying for medical care or rent. And some may have to leave their homes and even leave Ventura County because there's nowhere else they can afford to go. And these are longtime Santa Paula residents, some have lived here for 20 or 30 years. They work in our fields and our local businesses. And they're the people who keep our local economy going. They're the backbone of our community. And they're not asking for special treatment, they're asking for fairness and they deserve better. To make matters worse, residents were told they could appeal to the city council, their elected officials would have a say, but that turned out to not be true. And on top of that, some residents never received proper notice of the hearing or important documents from the city. And that's not okay. Everyone deserves clear, fair communication, especially when their homes and lives are on the line. That's why we're asking you to make a few simple but important changes to the rent stabilization ordinance. And add a clear right to appeal rent decisions to the city council. Number two, make sure every household gets notice of any hearing. Number three, ensure documents are sent out on time and made available. And put accountability measures in place if those steps aren't followed. This is about fairness, transparency and protecting the people who've built their lives here. Please do the right thing, not just for this park, but for all the mobile home residents in Santa Paula. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Bayo.
Let me give my thoughts some thought. Does anybody have something else first they wanted to say? If not, I'll muddle it a little bit. If, it appears to me that there was an error in process and that needs to be rectified. I don't know if it warrants changing how we do the appeal process, because as I understand it, and if you could clarify for me, if there is an appeal and it comes to us and there's a, there could be another appeal, in the end, we are not the final say, that still can be appealed. Is that correct?
Thank you, council member Cornejo. No, that is the final appeal. But it could, depending on what council wants to implement in its procedures, it's possible that it could be return to the, in this case, it would be the commission for correcting some errors and then it would go, it could be final at that point or appealable again to the city council.
And then after, after appeal, it goes to the, can go to the state though. So we're still not the final word because it can go to the state.
If it finally goes back up to city council in this, in this hypothetical... If not, I'll muddle it a little bit. If, it appears to me that there was an error in process, and that needs to be rectified. I don't know if it warrants changing how we do the appeal process, because as I understand it, and if you could clarify for me, if there is an appeal and it comes to us, and there's a, there could be another appeal, in the end, we are not the final say, that that still can be appealed, is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Cornejo. No, that is the final appeal, but it could, depending on what council wants to implement in its procedures, it's possible that it could be return to the, in this case, it would be the commission for correcting some errors, and then it would go, it could be final at that point, or appealable again to the city council.
And then after, after appeal, it goes to the, can go to the state, though, so we're still not the final word, because it can go to the state.
If it finally goes back up to city council in this, in this hypothetical ordinance procedure, then after council and the decision becomes final with council, then it will be litigated in court.
Okay.
It'll go to court.
So if you have, based on recent laws, which passed the state, I believe, last year or the year before, it firmed up those laws that if a, an owner of the park decides to raise the rates equivalent of $100, they have to justify it. They can't just arbitrarily raise it, they actually have to show the cost involved to do so, whether it's either CPI, or if it is just, they can't just arbitrarily raise it to a certain amount, they have to justify the cost. Is that my understanding, there's, there's more strict requirements of that? Is that my...
I'm not familiar with law you might be referring to.
I'm maybe thinking of just regular renters as opposed to mobile home parks.
There are, so there are, there are two bodies of law, one that governs mobile homes, and then one that governs residential units, with exception of a few.
That doesn't apply.
So there is, there is a statewide rent control law that sets a maximum on most non-mobile home residential units. Perhaps that's what you're thinking of.
So, yeah, it doesn't fall under this category? There's a different protection for renters?
Sure. I think you can answer this without, you know, jeopardizing the current process, but if it ends up in litigation in the current state of any mobile home park, it's going to be between the owner and the residents, correct? Or does that include the appellate body like that commission, or if the council someday were to be that, you know, deciding body, would they be subject to any litigation?
So it's, both are possible.
Really?
So there can be, whenever the city's involved in a decision, they, the city can be sued in court to overturn that decision. And then there's also the possibility of a lawsuit between two private parties, in this, in this case, it would be between tenant or residents and their park owners.
Thank you.
So I want to say a few things about this. One, it's disturbing that we've been having residents that have been impacted coming to us multiple times. It's not just one time, but multiple times, and we don't have our act together. We said one thing, tonight, we also don't even know what the ordinance really means, and thank you for questioning these things that you found. Why are we not doing a better job when, we should be walking on eggshells when we have the public as engaged as it has been, to ensure that we're doing everything we can to protect the process and the trust that they're having in us in bringing these issues to our attention? So that is why I brought this up, just for one simple thing, not even to correct, because it's going to have, it's not going to have an impact on what's happening now, but it's to tell the residents that we're listening to you, and we didn't get it right, and ultimately, we as the elected officials should have, use our full faith and responsibility to protect decisions that happen in the city. For instance, we've said before that we do not want to have unelected individuals make final decisions. We've said that before, and when we're talking about Measure R. We said that everything is advisory, everyone's going to advise us, but ultimately, we take that responsibility, that burden, because we were elected by the community, by the people. So this is just trying to correct a wrong. It's not going to have an impact on the current case, but it's going to say, you know what, community, we're actually listening, we apologize that we got this wrong. And ultimately, not giving that responsibility to three unelected people, they're part of that process, right? So they make a decision. What I'm asking for is fairness on both sides, it can go either way, right? The appeal can go on either side, but we should ultimately, if there's an appeal, we should have a say, because then we're putting a seal of protection, in a sense, that, hey, this is a final decision of this city, it's gone through the committee hearing, now it's, they've appealed, it's come to the council, and we made a decision, because we're elected sometimes to make these tough choices. I would, I would like, I don't want to burden three unelected people with making such a decision that's final. And this is exactly what we basically said existed in the first place. So if we, if something gets appealed on either side, it comes to council, we make a decision on that appeal, and then, then the whole city is protected, the way I see it. The whole city is protected because we've had due process, right? And now they can go to the Superior Court or whatever court to fight us, but we've already gone through a public process, and we've given both sides an opportunity to appeal, which creates a stronger legal argument that, hey, I've actually had an opportunity to contest against the people that either voted against me on whatever the request was. So it's not, it's something very simple, just to add us as a layer of protection through this process.
So first of all, I want to agree that it's very unfortunate that the correct information didn't go out initially, right? That, that there was a misunderstanding on the process. If, if some of the notices didn't get to the residents in the way that maybe they should have, I don't know, I'm not, that's a little bit unclear to me, that's what the speaker had suggested. You know, I definitely want to make sure that the process is clear going forward, both for whoever's interpreting it and for, you know, so, so I, I think that we definitely need to look at the ordinance to make sure that it has, that the, that the process going forward is clear and accurate. What I would also, though, want to understand, because, you know, we're going through the municipal code anyway, right? So there's all kinds of things that we're updating and modernizing. But before, like, I don't know that I'm ready tonight to make a decision on whether or not we should be the appeal body, because I don't 100% understand yet why it is then, if that's such a good idea, that the majority of the cities in California aren't doing it. So I would like to understand better why that's not done, and are there unintended consequences? You know, does it, does it inadvertently end up costing the residents more, or, you know, are there costs that get, end up getting passed on to them that we're unaware of if that happens? Like, I just, I just want to make sure that on that end, whether or not we should ultimately be the body, I get philosophically, I get what you're saying, Mayor, I just want to understand why that's not normally done, and, and are there unintended consequences to doing that? I mean, I definitely think we need to look at the process, we need to make sure it's clear, we need to make sure that staff all understands it, that it can be easily explained, you know, if there needs to be language added about making sure residents get mailed a, a notice, you know, some of that kind of stuff, I think that we need to definitely make sure that that's looked at, but then I, I would want to understand better why there aren't more cities that do that before, and I don't know if we have any answers for that tonight, but before we went ahead and said, you know, I would, I would not feel comfortable saying tonight, we're absolutely going to do that going forward in the future without having more information about why it's not normally done.
It looks like some of these issues haven't been, they all came out around the same time, '83, '82, '81, '80. They just have, there just hasn't been precedent set before. I think you can find, you can make the argument, and this always happens when you're in a bureaucracy, you can make an argument about, oh, well, let me see what other people are doing, you know, we have to do what's right for this city. Maybe we have to set the precedent, instead of looking and seeing what other cities are doing, because we're always going to find cities that do and cities that don't, right? On every issue. There's so many cities, how many cities are there in the state of California?
483.
Right? So we, sometimes we have to be the leader, and when we find injustice, let's fix it, right? It's not going to have an effect on what's happening now, but something as, 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 as small as giving an opportunity for a real due process, right? And not giving the burden to three appointed individuals to set the standard for the entire city when there's no measure of responsibility. In a sense, they just come one time, and then you're not going to see them in six years unless someone challenges that. I think it, all we're saying is that create an opportunity for an equal playing field, so that either side, there's at least a process of appeal that is from the elected officers of the city.
Thank you, Mayor. There are several different options that we were presented with tonight, different ways to go, and I don't know that you can bring it to a future agenda item and get done, maybe, maybe this warrants a future study session. That's just a suggestion I have, and...
I would ask at least for another opportunity for more education, having just learned that most, in fact, only one city in our county does have that process, and it's not exactly the process that goes to council, that it may have already been tested, and that's why. So I'd like to know if that's the case or if it's just new. So I would like more information or the opportunity to discuss it, and maybe even speak with some of the other city attorneys in the county to find out, and, and the county itself, why, why the process in place is, is good enough. That being said, again, I'm very regretful that the process was confused for, for one mobile home park in our city, and, and that needs to be corrected for the future processes and all too. But I, I'm not ready to make a decision either tonight on that, but I, I'm not saying no either, I'd like to know more about it, if there's a way that we could do it without putting the city itself at risk as well, which doesn't serve the city very well either. So I'd want to, I'd want to look again into it if, if we could.
What recommendations do you have, Ms. Castillo, in terms of discovery and looking for alternative options?
Well, I do think a discussion with our neighbors is warranted, and I do think a study session would be very valuable. As we are doing our municipal code update, we did discuss, there are certain areas of our code that is going to require much more community input. I think we clearly identified one of those sections of our code that has a very serious impact on our residents, and they'll want to be heard and contribute to that discussion. So I, I would, I would suggest a study session jointly with even the planning commission and commissioners.
Would the council be in favor of not just looking at mobile home parks, but looking at renter protections as well?
I think that's outside the scope of this agenda item, but certainly can be brought into a, another future agenda item discussion, so.
So why don't we table this for discussion, and then we could look at alternatives? And obviously, we, December 21st, 2023, this council allowed us to proceed with the conversation on rental protections, and we, it hasn't gone anywhere. So I know when bureaucracy happens, and, well, let's find something here, let's find something there, so I'm going to bring it back, and, you know, it's important for us not to let this go. Something as simple as just creating an additional due process, I think is important for our residents, and we need to do a better job, because even tonight, Ms. Crosswhite pointed out things in the language that you guys didn't have answers to. And by now, we should have those answers, we should know exactly how tight this ordinance is. So let's do better. Thank you. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item 10, I'm sorry, 11B. Thank you so much for waiting, we're excited about Union Oil Building. Mr. Singer?
Mayor, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest with Item 11B with the oil museum license agreement. I have both an actual and a perceived conflict. My actual is that I own property within 500 feet of the oil museum, and I've been a board member, a member and a board member for many years of the Santa Paula Historical Society. So I'd like to abstain from any vote, recuse myself from the dais, I don't believe I have to leave the council chambers.
Is that correct, Ms. Castillo?
You do have to leave.
I do?
Yes.
Sorry, Vice Mayor.
All right, well then, I'm going home.
Thank you. So noted for the record. All right, Mr. Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before I start, I, I would just like to say a few thank yous, because this has been quite the process. And so I'd like to thank some of my colleagues, Jonathan Royas and Mr. Mason, Ms. Castillo, our city attorney, our, your ad hoc committee, council ad hoc committee, and, and the Historical Society, and Leap Lab representatives, and our city manager, who's attended some meetings. There's been a lot of meetings, a lot of back and forth, and it's taken us quite some time to get here. So with that, just wanted to thank everybody, I think it's shown, what, what's been positive and has come out of it, though, is a true sense of collaboration amongst the groups, the city and, and the groups that are here this evening for the license agreements. As you know, when you're negotiating or going back and forth on things, there's a little give and take on both sides, and so it's been, it's been really healthy, and gives me, and I think I can speak for the rest of the staff, just a lot of promise that this will be, would be a good relationship moving forward, and we have a lot of excitement around it. I'm not going to read the whole staff report or just go through it, but just to summarize a little history, you know, as we all know, in November of 2022, Chevron approached us about donating that building to the city, and so going through that process and, and council approving the transfer agreement, or the city attorney to, to do the transfer agreement, and then our celebration at the building with Chevron to accept the, the building was all exciting. And then we kind of got into our next phase of community meetings and doing outreach to kind of hear what the community wanted to see as far as use, and future use of that, of the building. And then that resulted in putting out requests for proposals to see what interested parties or ideas for use of the building, and that garnered five returns. Staff came back to you all with a, during a study session, and presented staff's recommendation of three organizations to potentially look into pursuing license agreements for use of the building. And that ended up resulting in us moving forward with two of them, Leap Lab, Ventura County Science Center, and the Santa Paula Historical Society. The copies of the license agreements are attached as exhibits to your, to the staff report that was presented, and there are representatives from both Leap Lab and the Santa Paula Historical Society here this evening, and they can answer specific program questions or, or answer questions about their organizations or their future plans. Staff is recommending that we enter into these license agreements, they are five-year agreements. I will note that on the dais this evening, you did have a redline copy of Page Eight of Leap Lab's agreement. Inadvertently, during all the back and forth, there was a portion of Section 18 that was, that was left out, general liability, some language, general liability, that our city attorney strongly suggests is in the agreement. I did reach out to Mr. Erickson with Leap Lab to make him aware and apologize for the inadvertently leaving that out of the agreement. We had a brief discussion, but wanted to make them aware prior to coming to council this evening, so they are aware of that. But with that, just wanted to, happy to answer any questions, but just want to say that we're happy to be here. If it's council's pleasure that we execute these license agreements, the work is just beginning still, I keep saying that every time we hit a milestone, because then the, the work will be to get the building open, and there's a lot of content and things that we're actually meeting tomorrow with a working group to start working with the content and figuring out what to do with some of the items that are there to make space. But the work just begins, and we're excited to get the building back open and available to the community. So with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions, and there's representatives from both groups here this evening as well.
Questions, council members?
All right, just to, just to make sure I'm understanding... Just to make sure I'm understanding, so on the release of liability, it says that people who visit, visitors, I think is what it calls them, will be asked to reform, to sign a lease of liability, a release of liability for activities that reasonably foresee risk of physical harm. How do you assess an activity that reasonably foresees risk of physical harm?
Is there a legal definition for that?
Yeah, I want to go to legal definition.
It's defined in case law, so it'll be dependent on the facts of a situation. And, you know, some of, a lot of times, it could just be, if you are, for example, scuba diving, a foreseeable risk of harm is drowning.
I mean, I hope we're not scuba diving in the building. I mean, something has gone horribly wrong in the basement, it's full of water. But, no, so I guess I was just trying to understand how they, the lessees, are addressing, assessing whether or not someone needs to...
So we've had the discussion with Leap Lab concerning that. If someone is visiting the science center, walking off the street, you know, as a museum, there's not a liability that waiver necessarily they would fill out. But if they're going to have maybe a special, like an overnight kind of event there, or a camp, a summer camp, where kids are going to be there for an extended period of time in programming, we're asking for releases on those types of activities. So casual visitation, no, but extended type of programming or things, we've asked them to have a release form, and that they would have to keep record of that, make us aware, number one, and then keep, I think, record of that for seven years on file for us digitally and that we would have access to.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question, but that's kind of how we're getting.
And then in terms of the amount of the lease, so as I'm understanding this currently, both from the staff report and from the language in the MOU, it's a fixed monthly amount.
Yes.
And there's also option for extension for, what, a total up to 20 years? So what I'm, is there a point after those first initial five years? Like, I don't see anything in here that states, unless there's an expansion of square footage, where you could then reassess things are more financially stable, where you could perhaps have a CPI after the first five years? Or, so I'm just wondering if that is something that was discussed? Would it require language in the initial MOU?
So there is not a current CPI escalator, obviously, in the current first five-year term. After five years, there is language, I believe, and I'd have to defer to city attorney, that allows us, it talks about fair negotiation, like to, we can negotiate a new rent amount. It won't necessarily be market value, but that we can negotiate an increase in rent. If, there's also language that if any party would like to acquire more space, they would get first right of refusal, but then we would negotiate the rent at that point as well or the cost for that. I can tell you that Leap Lab is interested in additional space, and we'll probably have that conversation sooner than later. We've asked to hold off a little bit because we need some space for content to move, and so after we kind of get through what we're doing with content, then we're going to have discussions about some additional space. So that discussion probably will happen much longer before the first five years as we get to that point, sooner than later. But I believe there's language too, and I'll defer to city attorney, that allows us to open negotiations.
Yeah, so the agreement in Section 4B describes how with no later than six months before the end of the initial five term, and every five-year term thereafter, the city must submit to the licensee an option to continue licensing the current area and/or new area that's not under a current license agreement. And for that new area of license, the new license area, they have to, it says, agree to pay a reasonably higher fee for that area. So there was discussion, initially it was a requirement to pay the fair market value, but then negotiated to a reasonable higher fee.
Right, and I guess I saw that part, but it's calling it a new license area. So I guess that's the only part that I was finding here, was that there was an option if there was a new area. But I guess I wasn't finding the language where it said, and maybe it's in here somewhere, but I had, well, there's an option to extend, but that you could potentially look at...
Increase the rate increase.
At the option to, when that option to extend is exercised. So that was the piece that I wasn't quite sure. I saw that right with a new license area. I just wasn't sure if, when we got around to the next five years, if I had missed somewhere where it specified that we could also look at the rate if everything was, you know, sort of more financially established at that point.
That may have been the party's intent to also, I think, Councilwoman Crosswhite, you were saying, you're pointing out that this room for a higher rate applies only to the new license area and not the existing one?
Right, at least that's the way that I'm reading it. And so I don't know if we could, if we need to sort of clarify and, I don't want to not be able to start moving forward, but I just, I want to make sure that we can at least have that conversation at the point that we, whoever's on council in five years is considering a five-year extension. I want us to make sure that whoever's in these seats has the opportunity to have that conversation.
Well, if it's council's direction, if you want us to relook at that language, we can work with the city attorney and the parties to just tweak it a little bit, to make sure that language is built in. Because the way the current agreement is also written, and Ms. Castillo, please correct me if I'm wrong, it wouldn't come back to council actually in five years because it's, it has, the terms can continue every five years if there's, so it'd be good to build it in now.
Right, so then, and then it doesn't have to come to whoever's on council, but I just, I feel like that piece is a little squishy still, the way that I'm reading it.
Right, so is it council's, well, I guess we'll finish the discussion first.
Go ahead.
I think that's a good idea, not that it would be our intent to raise it arbitrarily after five years, but what if we don't create an endowment fund that covers the other expenses in the building, and we feel the need that in order to cover our costs to maintain the building, it gives us the opportunity after five years to reassess that, not necessarily take advantage of the, those that are there. That's not the point, but it would just give the option if things aren't going as we had Having been the one surviving member of the committee that's been through the process since the beginning, I've seen all the negotiations going and all the heart that's gone into it, the thought and the time to make sure that this can work, and I'm really excited about this project. And no building, a building deteriorates if it's not alive and has something going on inside it, so we really need that for that building anyway. So I feel that just making that adjustment only because we don't know where our economic situation will be if our deferred maintenance ends up being a lot more than we thought, things like that, that we might be in a position where we could come back and renegotiate within reason, you know? I just, I don't want to say, oh, yeah, you're in, now we're going to double your rent or something like that. That would not be the intent, but just to have the option to do so if the parties agree.
And we can, we can work with both parties to tweak that language and move forward. And I will note, too, that we have additional space that still might be, there might be a possibility to rent or to give the parties first stab at expanding if they'd like. But there's also an understanding, it's not in the license agreement, because it's not really appropriate necessarily to be in a license agreement, but just the working relationship. Both parties have agreed to assist with ongoing fundraising for the property so that we can continue to build that endowment. I can't stand a front and tell you exactly what that looks like today because that's going to take time to kind of establish, but they're very much invested in helping us down that path to raise funds to support the building. So we hope that that'll also generate revenue for us.
That was going to be my, that next question or comment is, where did that go? But I think having this, in earlier negotiations, talking about, well, a certain percentage, and then we're having to monitor what their costs are all the time, was going to create an awful lot of extra effort, and this gives them certainty and it gives us certainty, which I think is great, rather than having us, you know, how are your sales going? We want a certain percent towards our endowment and that sort of thing, because we were looking at all options as it went along. I did want to ask if there's one thing that could be included in it, and I don't know if it's possible or not, and this is the fact that since it's a landmark, historical landmark, in the license agreement, if there can be any kind of inclusion of respect for, respect or preservation of the original history of the building. And I just know from this community, there are a lot of people who have worked in that industry or benefited from that industry. Our city was half oil, half ag, and so being part of our history, just have a passage in there that makes sure that that is preserved. I don't know that Chevron would have given us the building if they thought we might just forget all of that. So, and I know it's a historic preservation and not a statement of some kind, but I just would hope that maybe we could have something added in the terms. I'm not sure if that's, if I'm making myself understood on that, but...
Is the building under the Mills Act?
No.
It's not?
Right now, we have one building that's under the Mills Act, and we're looking at coming back to council to provide a broader Mills Act that could include both residential and other commercial properties.
So if it's, the building's not protected for historical preservation?
It is, it is a landmark, so it is protected. It has specific criteria that has to be maintained based on its landmark status, so that's already...
So that could be, if that could be included, some kind of terminology to that effect in the agreement, just a recognition of the fact that the building is.
We, so as far as any improvements to the building, so structurally or any improvement, it is in there, that there is no improvements allowed without a written approval from the city. We are responsible for all capital improvements to the building, as we've discussed, roof and those types of things. But if there's any tenant improvements that they would like to see or that they're willing to do, they have to give, get written prior approval through the city to do any changes, structural changes, or any painting walls, carpet, any of those things have to be approved by the city prior so that we can monitor that.
Okay.
That is written into it.
That's in, okay.
Who approves it?
It would come through my office and probably work with Mr. Mason, as far as making sure we're following any historical policies or designation, that we're following those rules.
Doesn't go to the committee, design?
No.
Actually, if, depending on the scope of the work, low-hanging fruit would be staff, then design assistance committee, and then, excuse me, ultimately, the planning commission, which acts as the historic preservation commission. But most of it would be at a staff level.
And I wonder, Councilmember Cornejo, if the fact that the majority of the rig room is currently not included in what will be changed, and so I don't know if that speaks to what you're concerned about, is that that large rig room platform area is not included in this agreement? So it will remain as mostly as the rig room with just some display area in the front?
I'll be honest, that as long as the process went, there was concern sometimes about whether certain displays would disparage the heritage of the building. And I don't believe that that's the intent or that it will come based on who we've got coming in, but I think it needs to be said anyway. So just because I want to take great care on the heritage of the building and respect for what came before us, even if we're in a changing world, and it may not be, our world and the future world may be different, we don't want to disparage the history that we have. So that respect for the building, I think Chevron trusted us to give us that, the building based on that, and I just want to honor that too. So, and that's, I think, just being able to state that and raise everyone's consciousness for that, I think, is a good thing, so.
I appreciate that. And so, and to just touch on the rig room, everything behind the rail is staying, and in fact, we're going to take some of our content and display it there. And then in front of the rail, the idea is to kind of talk about the future of energy, so it kind of ties into that.
Great. Yeah, and I don't want to be too negative about this because I'm quite excited we're at this stage too, and I'm very excited about the tenants that we're going to have as well. So I, and I think it's a really nice balance, and I think it's a great home for the historical, what is your exact title, Historical Society, to have a place and be at home there as well. So I'm quite excited about all this, but I did want to just make mention of that as well, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you for...
Any other questions? No? Any motion?
No, I was just trying to, I was trying to think, based on the conversation, how exactly to make the motion. I'm trying to think how to give you direction in terms of talking with the parties about what happens after the first five years. And I don't know if anyone else has feedback on the respecting the history piece from the council before we make a motion. That was the part that I was trying to figure out.
Is there any guidance from our city attorney? With the contract language that was proposed by Councilmember Crosswhite?
Well, with the request that a provision be added that in effect says displays do not disparage, shall not disparage the heritage of the building, we'll need to...
Tweak that a bit, yes.
Yeah, work that out a little bit and see if the other parties are agreeable to that.
Of course.
But generally, because it is a city facility and it's regulating commercial speech, we probably have a good room to make that sort of requirement in the agreement, but again, we'll have to work with the wording a bit. And then the other request was, and Councilmember Crosswhite in council, please let me know if this is correct, some way to, after that initial five-year term and each term thereafter, require some sort of way to renegotiate the entire existing and new, if any, license area.
Just the option to renegotiate on...
What if, what if we said something like that we have the, I had it and then I lost it, the ability to assess the reasonableness of a, what was the language that was used before? A reasonably fair...
We can use the same language that's there with the...
Because again, it might be that, because I have no assumptions one way or the other. We might get to the end of the five years, and it may be that, you know, fundraising has been phenomenal and there's absolutely no need to do any adjustment, or we may get to the end of the five years and there's been no fundraising, and we go, you know, maybe we could do... you know, maybe we could do a CPI. Like, I just don't know. And so I just want to make sure that there's language that we can have that conversation in five years.
To be, so for clarification, do we want to treat existing licensed area differently from new licensed area? Because existing, I think I heard from one of our councilmembers that we don't want them to have to be captive if they're, if they're having an existing licensed area and then can only continue to use it if we demand a certain increase in, in fees. But again, it's to pleasure the council, you want that to apply, if you want the whole area that they're going to theoretically renew for leasing or licensing in the next five-year period to be higher than we can, we can work with them.
Again, I don't have an assumption of whether or not the existing space should be higher. I just want it to be, I want us to be able to have the conversation on whether or not it's reasonable to look at that amount at the time that a contract was extended.
I can add one thing. I know we have some things in our other leases or releases that I've seen and two elements. One, that there's a reopener after a certain amount of time and that on mutual consent and discussion that we could have, bring that back. So depending on where we are.
What do we have in other contracts that we've, isn't there existing language somewhere?
It's, most of what we have is based just on CPI, usually an annual CPI. The ones, when I first got here, that didn't have CPI, usually there was, after the initial period, there was an opportunity to renegotiate or again, an opener.
And I think the difference is a lot of those contracts are with commercial entities and this will be with a nonprofit. So that's why I'm trying to balance.
I think the existing language around, that's currently there for new space, maybe we can just add some language that includes after five years, same kind of intent that we would, we have the opportunity to negotiate with them for an increase, maybe even cap it to a certain amount so they don't feel like rent's going to be doubled on them or we're going to go so that there's some kind of language in there so both parties feel comfortable with it, but that allows us after five years to relook at the, at the rent rate and possibly increase if needed. I mean, we can build it into that section that's currently there and maybe just add a little, some.
And maybe they have some recommendation as well. I mean, I, I don't know exactly what that should look like. And I don't want to spend a ton of time trying to negotiate it here without, you know, mutual discussion, but just something that I would, I would like us to look at. So I don't know if maybe the direction, I'm going to feel into this and you can all tell me, what if the, the motion was that in general, we, we consent to the MOU, but maybe if they could work on language around what happens at the end of those first five years in terms of the rate and, and not that I expect that to happen, but you know, something, some, if there could be some language that everyone could agree to around a respect for the history of the space. And then you could even bring it back on consent at a future meeting. And that way, it should hopefully just be able to be passed on consent at that point because I think those are the only two things that we would just like to see discussed with the applicant. And so if that seems to be okay with everyone, I could make that a motion.
Two points of clarification.
Yes.
Not MOU, but the.
I'm sorry, license agreement. Most things we do are MOUs and so, yes, the, sorry, clarification, the license agreement.
For some definitive guidance, council would like higher, something higher than the current fees for the future.
Or at least a mutual conversation about that at the fifth year.
Okay, so no guarantee of, they're not required to pay more if they're going to enter a second term.
I.
There's a cost of living, isn't there?
So just broadly renegotiate?
I, I don't know. I don't, because that's the part I'm not sure exactly what that should be. I don't know if it should be, we consider a CPI at that point. But again, I, it's hard to anticipate what things look like in five years. I just don't want, I don't want to leave it exactly as is and say nothing.
If I could, as a result of the uncertainty of where we're at in five years, I would recommend we have Monica draft language that gives that, that flexibility. So if it is broad negotiation, that's what it should be. If, if we're in an economic downturn and, you know, rents have fallen in half for retail space, then we should be able to negotiate that with the tenants at that time.
So do you have enough direction in order to bring this back?
I just want to check with Director Barnes if that's consistent with the tone of your conversations with the licensee has been with Leap Lab.
We haven't had much discussion around the CPI, which this will allow us to do that. Bringing it back to, we can have it at the next council meeting for consent so that we can keep moving this along. These agreements, the license agreements don't go into effect till August 1st because Leap Lab will be digging up dinosaurs here pretty soon. And so they're not going to be available to execute things till a little later. So it gives us a little bit of room to kind of play with that, but I'm sure we can turn something around pretty quickly.
I don't think we want to delay this, but would like to have a little bit more language in there, just giving the city the options and then having that protection. And I had one question. If we move forward with historic buildings and Mills Act and things like that, would that affect that building potentially?
Not really because it's city-owned, so it's already off the tax rolls.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So do we have a motion?
Do we need a motion at this point then if it's going to come back on consent or can we give direction? Since it's a little bit murky anyway.
Well, we have sufficient direction and we'll come back on, on consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Vice Mayor back, please.
If I could just mention also to the entities that plan to live in our building, I'm very excited for you on this and I'm, I know this is long in coming, this has taken a while to get to this point. I'm very happy about that though.
All right, we're moving along to item 11C.
Mr. Mayor, while our city engineer is getting situated, I will introduce this item. The council had an opportunity back in March to hear from our engineer about our next cycle of pavement management, the investment that we'll be able to make as a result primarily of the wonderful support our citizens gave to Measure R. And at that time, the council explored a couple of options for accelerating our pavement management program. As we conclude Cycle 1 and head into the next five-year cycle, the desire, I think, on everyone's mind is to move that process along as quickly as possible and to invest as much as possible in our roads. And Mr. Woodward did a great job laying out what that likely scenario looks like. However, at that time, the council also said, well, before we give direction on the next five years, let's make sure we understand and have information relative to what borrowing some money and doing further acceleration might look like. And to walk us through those scenarios, we're joined tonight by our municipal advisors, NHA advisors with, with us is Christian Sprunger as well as Eric Scriven. So they're on Zoom and Mr. Woodward is, is here. So I would suggest allowing Mr. Woodward to just talk briefly about, you know, again, the, the idea behind the road program in next five years and then to hear from our fiscal advisors about options.
Thank you, Mr. Singer, and good evening, Mayor Chavez, members of council. We were before you guys in March of this year presenting more information on the potential for accelerated pavement management based on assumptions of financing from the recently passed Measure R. One of the questions that was asked was how can we accelerate this paving program to condense what was projected as a five-year program in a shorter order? And as, as a point of clarification relating the staff report to the NHA presentation, the options that were reflected in the background, there was mention about dismissing a full financing option that was noted as option two. That is option three in NHA's presentation, just, just as a point of clarification. But there was interest in understanding what that could look like in terms of the impacts and implications of an accelerated financing. And to that, we asked NHA to take a look at that from a breakdown. And that's the content of their presentation, which they'll reflect to you tonight and was included as an attachment to the staff report. And with that, I'll turn it over to NHA.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, city council, city staff, members of the public. My name is Christian Sprunger. I'm the vice president with NHA Advisors, City's Municipal Financial Advisor, joined tonight by my colleague Eric Scriven. I'm going to share my screen here, so bear with me a moment while I do that and then we'll jump right into it. Okay, I've started showing my screen. I hope you all can see it.
Yep.
Great, thank you. The first slide here talks about the background and I think this is old news for, for most everyone here. As the city manager mentioned, this item has come before council before. This is a continuation of an item that came before council last month and then in March as well. It's not news to anyone here that street repairs to upgrade the PCI are needed. And the concept behind the options we're analyzing is essentially an acceleration of Cycles 2, 3, and 4 of the 20-year cycles, that's 15 years, down to a five-year period for Option 1, or potentially accelerating them even further down to a two-and-a-half-year period for Options 2 and 3. So to summarize, Option 1, which I'll get into a little bit more on the next slide, but Option 1 is a pay-as-you-go financing only, which means that, I'm sorry, pay-as-you-go only, which means no financing for the project. Option 2 is a blend between financing and pay-as-you-go with the majority being done through pay-as-you-go. And then Option 3 would be a financing only. To give you a little bit more detail behind those three options, under Option 1, the city would commit an additional $2 million annually to effectively double the investment in the street improvement funding plan, in the PMP, that is. So that would allow the acceleration to five years, meaning $4 million a year for five years, $20 million total. Option 2, where we blend a pay-go and a partial financing, assumes an $8 million financing and a $12 million pay-go component. Because that $8 million is financed in '26, fiscal year '26, it allows the project to be accelerated by about two and a half years. Debt service on a financing under Option 2 would commence in fiscal year '28, '29 to be paid from Measure R receipts. And then Option 3 is a financing-only option. As, as the city engineer mentioned, our understanding is that this is not necessarily a desired option. Nevertheless, we think it provides some helpful context to frame up these options, so wanted to give you the, the math behind what that option would look like as well. Option 3 notably doesn't accelerate the project meaningfully beyond what Option 2 would accelerate the project. So for all intents and purposes, Options 2 and 3, both are about a three-year, a two-and-a-half to three-year project. This slide summarizes the relative cost between those two, those three scenarios. As you might expect, Option 1, which is the pay-go only, has the lowest cost to the city in terms of cash flow and present value. So it's $20 million in cash flow costs and about 17.6 million in today's terms or present value terms. Options 2 and 3, because they have some debt financing, there is interest cost associated with that. And so you can see the cash flow cost of Option 2 is 21.6 million. That's that middle column there, the green column. Or the present value cost, today's terms, is about 18.4 million. Option 3, cash flow cost about 24.7 million or cash flow cost about 20.3 million. Now, this is where I think the analysis gets a little nuanced because of course, there's the interest cost associated with financing, some component of this, but the nuance comes into play with respect to avoided inflation costs. So under Option 1, the project is accelerated from the 15-year original PMP timeline down to a five-year period. But it's a five-year period and so there is an inflationary risk over that five-year construction period. Because Option 2 further accelerates that down to two-and-a-half years, there's an avoidance of inflation risk during that two years or two-and-a-half-year period is shortened. And so what you see in the bottom of that table there is potential loss of purchasing power under a couple of inflationary scenarios. The top row being a 3%, the middle row being a 4.5%. And then the difference between those is really kind of implied sensitivity to inflation. And so the conclusion that I would draw from looking at that bottom, bottom half of that table is Option 1 has a higher susceptibility or sensitivity to inflation, which intuitively kind of makes sense because you're talking a five-year project, that's five years where inflation can affect you versus a two-year, or I'm sorry, a two-and-a-half-year project. So there is, the nuance at play is, yes, Options 2 and 3 have a interest cost. There's no denying that. It is what it is. Option 1, though, there is that purchasing power loss over that five-year period versus a, a two-and-a-half-year period. It's hard to really predict what that inflation could be over the next five years, so we picked the 3 and the 4.5% just to give a framework for what that might look like. Now, I want to give a little bit of additional color on Option 2, what that might look like. So there's some potential benefits that we did not quantify because it's really hard to quantify them. For example, accelerating the, accelerating the project from five years to two-and-a-half years could avoid some additional capital costs on streets that are starting to really accelerate on the degradation curve. Again, really hard to quantify that, but it's intuitively, there is some benefit there potentially. Additionally, there is, there's additional potential benefits. For example, property tax values on properties that border newly improved streets could grow faster. Again, really hard to quantify that, so we didn't attempt to do so for this analysis, but we want to recognize that that is something to consider. The term of any financing would be a short term, so under a 10-years, likely in the eight to 10-year range. It'd be structured as a lease revenue bond or a certificate of participation. And so that's effectively a lease, leaseback structure. And it would require the city to pledge other real assets as collateral for financing. The size and term, so under $10 million, well, $8 million for Option 2. And under 10-year term really lends itself toward or implies that a private placement or a direct placement with a regional or national bank may be a really effective option if that's something you want to look into. One benefit of going with a direct placement or a private placement is it opens the door for potentially structuring it as a draw schedule or a drawdown loan. In, in that scenario, it would function sort of like a line of credit. You would accrue interest based on actual draws. But I do want to caveat that comment just by saying that draw schedule loans are highly market supply dependent and interest rate dependent. So they're not always available and there may be a cost associated with structuring a loan that specific way. Just to give you a sense for timing, if Option 2 is something. Just to give you a sense for timing, if option two is something you're interested in, generally speaking, from start to finish, it's 90 to 120 days. Option two, of course, because it would include a financing component, if that's the council's direction, would, we would be coming back to council with financing documents, a financing agreement that the council will be able to review and then make the decision about approving at that time. To summarize and wrap up this presentation, option one, again, cheapest in terms of payments made by the city, both in cash flow terms and in present value terms, but option one does have a little bit higher inflation risk than option two. Option two, of course, has costs associated with it. That cost would be a function of a fixed interest rate. I didn't mention, but option two, any financing would be done as a fixed interest rate financing over the, over the term of the debt. The avoidance of that inflation for a two-and-a-half-year period is something to consider. There is a potential benefit there. I touched on previously that there are several other benefits that we didn't really quantify. Some of those are listed here. Again, really hard to quantify what these are, but we recognize that they, they do exist. And then finally, option three, we see it has significantly higher cost than option two, but it doesn't result in a meaningful avoidance of inflation risk, right? Because both option three and option two are approximately two-and-a-half to three years. And so there, we would not recommend an option three, which would be a full debt financing. So with that, I'm happy to take questions. The remaining slides in this deck are detailed cash flows, if anyone wants to dig into those, happy to do so. Otherwise, I'll be happy to take questions.
Do we have questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Can you estimate roughly the interest cost based on current interest rates for a loan that would be under 10 years?
Yeah, certainly. Let me go to, are you all able to still see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. The interest cost, I think the best way to illustrate that is looking at the option one and option two columns. If you look at the, so there's the, the present value cost at the very bottom, or not at the very bottom, I'm sorry, at the middle there with the dark colored shading, and then right above it is the total city funds spent on pay-go and debt service. That's a cash flow cost. So there's, there's two costs I would tell you to consider. There's the cash flow cost, which is how much you're paying over the next eight to 10 years, but there's also the present value cost. And so in cash flow terms, the interest cost is about $1.6 million.
Okay.
In present value terms, it's closer to about $800,000.
Thank you.
Are there prepayment penalties?
No, we would, we can structure the loan with a prepayment option. Generally speaking, with a loan of an eight to 10-year term, the chances of you prepaying it are, are small, but we can certainly build something like that in if that's your desire.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I have a question, I think for Mr. Woodward. So as we're looking at these options, other things that we're, we need to consider are, I know that as we, we didn't get to them, but if, in the back of our packet earlier, there were multiple capital improvement projects, many of which were water and sewer. So how, how does that integrate either into option one or option two? Because I, because I think, just to be clear, what I, what I don't want to do on either option is have it where we're paving the streets, they look fantastic, and then, oh, oops, six months later, we have to dig them up because we've got to replace that pipe because it's going to fail. So I'm just trying to figure out how the timing, like, do we have enough time for option one or option two to make sure that all of those things are coordinated? Or even in the bigger picture, as we're, whatever, whatever the cycles are that we're putting together, how are we making sure that we're timing those things?
Yeah, and I'll clarify that water, sewer, and storm drain were considerations when we were laying out the five-year option originally. We did clarify that the condition of the storm drains are largely unknown, so there were just estimates made in terms of what the cost could be, cost and scope. Studying that, programming it, and getting the work done in advance of paving, we would lean towards the five-year program, simply based on the unknowns. A faster program would tend to outrun implementation of sewer and waterline replacements, which we've seen as an issue previously, just based on the cost of waterline projects particularly. So it is a consideration. For example, we know that crosstown pipeline, we will go back into Santa Barbara Street, we will be trenching through some of these streets we've recently paved. We made kind of a calculated decision on that, just knowing that that could be a case, but this would be a case of doing that on a much more widespread approach. So definitely it is a consideration.
And then, how about in terms of communication with residents on one, option one or option two? I know that there were some hiccups in that communication on the last round of paving, and so I'm just wondering, as we're looking at these two and the project management of them, if, how that factors in?
Based on what we'd be contemplating with basically having two cycles of extensive paving per year, it would feel like there'd be almost a continuous paving process going from the time that things dry up in the spring till when they get just too cold and wet in the fall. There would be good advanced notification of residents, just based on recent experience. But again, I think that residents would kind of feel that it was a continuous process of construction going on to get all this paving and concrete work and what have you done. So that is a consideration in terms of kind of residents' tolerance for, for that level of activity.
Thank you.
So, it's one of those, let me get this straight, questions. If, if we're, if we accelerate with option two, we are saving about a quarter of a million dollars in inflation risk, but we're paying equivalent of $800,000 in interest to save that. Is that what I'm, but then we, in the end, would have the advantage of having things done sooner for the community, but it comes at a price. Is that what I understand? Am I reading that?
Yeah, it's a great question. The 250,000, that number is really, it's meant to be a comparison to the, the inflation risk for option one, and just to show that option one's more sensitive. I think if, to get what you're trying to ask, I would look at the difference between the loss of purchasing power. So for example, under the 3% scenario, it goes, you know, from a loss, potential loss of 1.15 million to a potential loss of 450,000. So that's a, you know, $700,000 difference in loss of purchasing power. So I'm thinking in this case about purchasing power, loss of purchasing power as a cost, right? And so in that context, option one has a, is a cost in terms of lost purchasing power, about $700,000 relative to option two. But option two has a cost in cash flow terms of about 1.5, 1.6 million in interest cost. So taking the net of that, there is, you know, there is a net cost from option two after factoring in inflation, hedging the inflation risk. That being said, it's, it, there's a lot of variables, right? Because I'm picking a 3% inflation number for doing that math. And so if it's a 4.5%, then the math's a little different. If it's 5%, then the math's a little different. But under a 3% inflation risk, you know, the difference is, is roughly $850,000 net cost for option two.
Okay, so that's roughly, and of course, we're ballparking, not knowing exact rates of interest, it would be upwards of a million or 800,000 more cost to the city to have it done in two and a half years rather than, in overall cost rather than in five. So if, I just want to make sure that, okay.
That's, that's correct, but if inflation was higher, that would go down. So that, that cost would go down as inflation goes up.
Right, because, because of the long term, right. Okay, thank you.
And if I might, the place that you'll kind of see that materialize, if you go to the detailed cash flow of option two, which is on page nine of the presentation, and you'll see in the gray far column, the borrowing of $8 million. But when you look in the second column of having to pay it back over a five-year period using Measure R proceeds, you're paying back 9.5 million. So that is eating up future capacity for us. Although...
But it's freeing up funds that are going to be available at a later date to be used on other things.
Well, no, because you'll, you'll have the payments that you'll have to make against that loan, right?
Right, that's a given.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing to keep in mind is that we would anticipate over time Measure R funds growing. And so this $1.9 million payment might not exhaust all of your Measure R monies for streets, because it's feasible that you might have, in four or five years from now, you might have growth that you could also still be utilizing.
And there's no prepayment penalty, so we can pay it fast if we wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
And we can refinance if the rates drop, right?
That's a good question, Christian.
That's correct. Similar to, the prepayment option would apply for either paying it off with cash or refinancing if you so desired. Before an eight-to-10-year term, again, refinancing it would be, it would be a very unique set of circumstances where that'd be economical, you're probably better off just to pay it off with cash, but yeah, that would be on the table as an option.
How do we calculate the estimate of 20 million? And what happens if it's more than that in either scenario?
So the, the $20 million estimate was, was really just that. It was an estimate based on remaining streets to be completed at basically costs that we'd been seeing over the last five years, adjusted out originally for about 10 years, looking at inflation and cost growth. So some of those original estimates already had baked in estimates for, for cost growth that we were seeing and that we were projecting. So we were looking at that projection previously over a 10-year cycle, so we retain that for the shorter term. So it may be slightly conservative, but we'd rather go a little on the conservative side because we have been seeing cost growth in quite a few areas in the industry.
Most of the work that would be done would be contracted like we did Harvard, correct?
That's correct.
So wages don't stay the same, and they're going to be increasing on contracts, right? Most of the time, things are not going to drop in terms of the cost to contract. So in a sense, we'd be saving some because we're factoring a shorter contract than a longer one, because there's a market factor is that, I mean, are going to raise the cost.
In a hyperinflation environment, or what we saw with COVID, or spiked oil prices because asphalt is heavily dependent on that, you could actually end up saving a lot of money. If we, if we're in a situation where we're seeing 8%, 10%, 12%, 15% inflation for these types of projects, accelerating it makes a lot of sense. Now, we, even if we lock in a company that will do all of these cycles in two and a half years, I don't believe that they'll give us guarantees on the material costs.
Sure, no.
Because they probably can't, but...
Unless they have a certain...
But it is something to keep in mind. These are, these are the pros and cons of, of the pay-go versus the accelerated.
I guess the level of urgency for me has been obviously tied into everything we've been going through as a city, right? But also, I'm sure you all got notification for the grand jury yesterday.
I don't think that that is public for another two days.
True.
There's a level of urgency. And I think the option two is a more median balanced approach of ensuring that we find cost-effective ways.
Just a real quick question, and, sorry if I didn't catch this, but if we were to move forward with the loan, do we encumber it all at once, or do we take it out as we need it, and therefore, basically, if we don't need it, we're not...
Pay as you go.
Yeah.
It's like a line of credit. Christian, can you answer that?
That makes sense?
Yeah, certainly. We would explore a line of credit type financing option. I mentioned that, yeah, there are banks that offer those, and we can certainly ask them to provide a bid for what their rate, interest rate might be on a loan of that nature, and then compare it against a bid from a, a traditional type loan, the interest rate on one of those, and see, you know, cost benefit, how much are you paying for that drawdown type line of credit structure? But yes, those instruments are in the market. They're a little bit dependent on, on the market, on just demand for funds and on interest rates, but I think we have good likelihood of being able to find a bank that would offer that.
If I might, as part of the diligence behind this presentation, we did speak with a couple of banks, and this did seem to be of interest to them, so this is a marketable type of financing. One thing that I think we should reiterate, though, is that the assumption here is that any type of loan or drawdown line of credit, it would be executed in fiscal 2026. I think that was early next year, right? Was our analysis, Christian?
That's correct, yeah.
In two tranches, right? Early, or spring of '26 and later in 2026, the two, two, $4 million pull downs, correct?
That, that's correct, and you can see that in, if you all can see this shared screen, the far right column there in the gray shows the 4 million happening in fiscal '26, and then the 4 million in fiscal '27. Could, that second tranche could be as early as summer or even late...
So technically, we still have time, you still have time to go back, get some options, and then bring some potential options to us without us committing to anything, correct?
Yes, that, yes.
Is it council?
It would be helpful to know if the council's desire would be to, to really pursue this, because of course, we have costs with NHA, so I don't want to have them pursuing things that the council's not interested. But yeah, it's a good point, because we don't need an answer about the funding immediately or even within the next 90 days. But Mr. Woodward will need some direction on whether he's coming back to you with a pavement management program that's for five years or for less.
And that's my question, because I know staff will always say if we ask, yes, we can do it, but how hard is it to cope with doing the rest of the city in two and a half What, what does that include? What does that do to the city and the staff?
It's, it's feasible to do. What we would do is, as we've noted, we'd break it into likely spring and fall, you know, paving cycles, and we would come up with a plan that, that addresses the different portions of the city, our recommendations with feedback we've gotten from council, and then some projections of what that scoping would look like from season to season. So it's, it's entirely feasible to do. Again, to the discussion about some of the water and sewer considerations, if we do have some hotspots or areas we're concerned about, we may kind of try to navigate around some of those areas for maybe the first season or two, to give ourselves time to address our concerns. So again, I, I think that it is feasible to, to implement the program, and we could certainly, we, we've got the streets, we've got the ideas of, of where some of those needs are, so we could certainly lay that out fairly efficiently.
So before you, could, could we ask the director of Public Works to get his perspective? So before you, could we ask the director of Public Works to get his perspective as well, because obviously, Mr. Woodward, you're a contractor, right? No offense. You don't manage the staff internally, and that's the question I think we're trying to get at.
I've never been an engineer, but I've been involved in, in this kind of work for a lot of years now. And obviously, the best direction to go with this kind of project is, is to do it right the first time, make sure that the, the underlying infrastructure is all good before you start working on the surface, and because that's what lasts the longest. That's the best bang for the buck. You know, you're doing it once instead of doing it twice or three times. Obviously, we're not in a position to do that right now. However, you, you need to understand as a council that we have a completed sewer master plan. We have that, it's done, and it's ready for us to do a rate study. We haven't started down, we haven't started the rate study yet because we're waiting to get through this, this budget cycle before we jump into something else. The water master plan is underway and will be completed probably in the next three or four months, and then we'll be ready to look at a rate study for the water master plan. That's the funding that we really need to have in order to work on the underlying infrastructure, the pipe that's in the ground. So from my perspective, always wanting to do it right, I would almost prefer to not do anything for the next year and just collect some more money from Measure R and then do everything right. Now, that's just my perspective as a Public Works Director, wanting to do it right. But that's not really, I don't, I don't see that option up there. So back to the options that are there, my preference would be to do, just to do pay as you go. Yes, there's the possibility we're going to lose a little bit of, of money as far as inflation goes. You know, our spending power might be lost a little bit, but I think if we, if we move a little more slowly, we'll be able to get ahead of the projects with, or the paving projects with the water and sewer projects. And, and that gives us an opportunity to actually do things right. And we haven't been able to do that, with the exception of Harvard. We haven't been able to do that on the city streets over the last five years. So Harvard is in really great shape because it was done right. Oh, and by the way, I trust this man.
I have a, a related but different question. So as we're debating pay-as-you-go versus the, the loan situation, what potential impact, if any, does it have to, I'm going to start, I think I have three questions, but I'm going to start with, to our, our city's credit rating, because I know that one of the things that we've gotten dinged about in the past is that even though our debt currently is in the enterprise funds, when they do the city's ranking of risk, we're always dinged on the fact that we have debt in our enterprise funds, even though it's not on the general fund. So what impact might that have if we were to do a loan on the general fund in our fiscal stability ranking?
See if the finance director wants to take a gander, but I would say, you know, we're not the rating agency, so understanding that it's ultimately up, up to their discretion after they do their review.
And I also wouldn't, I also wouldn't call the agency a rating agency, because it's the state that's ranking the cities in terms of risk. And so when we talk about rating agencies, we're really talking about rating agencies like S&amp;P Global, agencies that are assigning a value to our fiscal health in order to determine rates for future bonding and for those sorts of things. What the state is doing is taking their, their calculation, their, what they find as risk or healthy, and, and making that determination based on those factors. So you're right, that is why we find ourselves a lot of times on the lower end. That said, I will say that from the bit that I could understand, because it's a complicated factor that they do, they had three different categories or a couple of different categories. And so if we are already in red or yellow in this one category, and we get more to stay in red or yellow, I can't imagine that that would make us be further down. But again, without knowing their exact calculation methods, I wouldn't be able to 100% bet my life on that.
Going back to the director's comment about you wait for street improvement? You're telling me that there's not streets that can, can, should be done that don't have the underground infrastructure issues?
There are, but they're all in East Area 1. So almost everything in the city, this side of the creek is in really poor shape, except for some newer neighborhoods. That's just the reality of it. It's old pipe. I mean, we, we had a sewer leak a few weeks ago down on Harvard, and it's old clay pipe. That's what's in the ground, and so it's fragile. It, you know, it's just waiting to leak. And the sad fact is, in the case of clay pipe, probably most of it is leaking, but because it's not a pressurized system, we just don't know that it's leaking.
So the street improvements that have been done for the last five years, because we just finished that.
Yep.
You're telling me that they were done wrong?
Well, I, what I'm saying is that underneath all of that new asphalt is a lot of really old pipe. And, and I know my water, the, the water division has had probably 10 leaks in the last three or four days. So I don't know if that's like the tip of the iceberg, or if it's just, you know, something that happened and we won't have any more leaks for the next six months. I kind of don't think that's going to happen, but I, I.
So the urgency is trying to get into what we talked about before in terms of going in and checking in the conditions of the pipes?
And, and water is really hard to check. You can't TV it. You can TV sewer line, but you can't TV water line. So you just basically have to look at how old it is and, and make a, make a decision. There is a, there is a, a useful life for anything you put in the ground.
Absolutely.
And, and so most of this pipe has probably exceeded its useful life, and we're just.
So you're, you're studying currently the life, the lifespan of these pipes, and you're overlaying it with the streets to see which ones are more critical for priority, to set priorities?
Well.
What's the point of having the schedule that we have if we're going to have to dig underneath?
That's, that is the question. And, and that's a question that council members have to answer. You know, how, how do you want to go about it? I, I think you're in a position, you know, if I, if I didn't see that a rate study, rate studies were going to be done in the next six months to nine months, I would say, you know, then let's just move forward. But, but I think a pause while we get these studies done might be the prudent thing to But that's, that's, that's me looking at it as a public works director, not, I'm not a politician here. I'm not answering directly to the citizens of the community, I'm just answering to you. So that's my professional opinion. It may not be a popular one, though.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of thoughts. What we're debating here is the fact, since we have Measure R, we are, we already would be accelerating it at five years. It was supposed to be 15. So we are accelerating it no matter what, with or without the loan. So what we're debating is how much we want to accelerate it. The thought or the comment about Harvard and the first five years, everyone wanted Harvard done the first year. We didn't have the funding or the engineering done to get that done and do it right, and that's why it was done in year four or so, because it took that much time to get all the engineering done, and of course, the funding as well, too. So, so I can understand the, the desire to have it all done, but the, also debating the need to do it as, to do it properly, prudently, is, I think prudent's a good word, too. So I, I'm less inclined to take on that extra debt to get it done in two and a half. If already we have to wait a bit to get the engineering done, it may not be done in two and a half anyway. But I, I also understand how people are really sick of the roads, and I drive some of those every day myself, so I understand that, too. It's, it's, it's a very hard debate when you're managing, trying to manage and foresee the future on funding and interest rates and, and labor costs. We don't know. It's a lot of unknowns. So it's, it's, it's a tough decision to make, but I, I'm more inclined to just stay with the five-year. I, I just have a sense that if we did two and a half, it would end up being three or three and a half anyway, just once the engineering is done and it's all, the work gets done. So I, I, I'm just leaning that way, but still with some urgency to get some of those sidewalks done and some of those storm drains done as soon as we can, just for the safety of the community, so.
Director?
Thank you, Mayor, for entertaining my comments. I went from the back row to the middle to the front. A, a big thank you to Eric and, and Christian at NHA for this work. They, they did it better than I could have done during budget process or not, but definitely during budget process. There is one thing that, as, as you know, I like to keep things as simple as possible, and I want to make sure that, without swaying you one way or another, to be clear, no sway, I want to make sure that the, the simple math is understood, that we would be paying 1.6 million dollars or 450,000 on an $8 million loan, and that the interest rate on that is about 20%, Christian? No?
The, the interest rate on a loan.
For 8 million?
Current market?
Yeah.
For an $8 million loan under 10 years, we're assuming for analysis about a 4.5% interest rate.
4.5%? 1.6 million on eight, on $8 million?
That's correct, over an eight-year term. There's a little bit of capitalized interest in there to have no repayments during the first three years, so that's, that's part of that, that analysis that, I can talk a little bit more about that if you'd like.
Yeah, no, I was just clearing up. 1.6 million on an $8 million loan is 4.5% interest rate.
That's correct, but there is, there is some capitalized interest in there, so there's a little bit of compounding going on.
Got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were understood.
I think we are in agreement, we should just wait. Yeah, okay. Last comment.
Mr. Woodward, or the Public Works Director, is there anywhere that exists somewhere our infrastructure and when's the last time they were replaced around the city? That's my first question. Because then the follow-up question would be, you know, when you had a new development like Harvest, right? Well, that's all new infrastructure up. At Hillsborough in the 80s, that's new infrastructure. When they redid Las Perras Park area, those were all, you know, wooden, wooden houses on stilts, but who knows if in the 80s, they did all the infrastructure and the streets in. So how would we know if those were, you know, from the 40s or they're from the 80s?
We, we do have atlas maps that clarify the dates of construction of water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, so we do have a sense of the age of, of the infrastructure. What we have been seeing, and I'll look at water specifically, very high costs in terms of water system replacement. Mill Street was running about $600 millennial foot, very expensive. I think that if you looked at the wholesale costs of both replacing and upsizing our current water systems that'd go back to 1920s, to current requirements, fire flow, what have you, it would be hideously expensive, and take it in any world that you, that you put it in. There are real considerations with maintaining this old infrastructure. We do have progressive plans to improve different parts of the water system, but really, the, the paving program we've been doing is, it's a maintenance program. It's taking stuff that hasn't been overlaid in 50 to 70 years, it's way in excess of its 20-year design life, and trying to make it progressively better for the residents and of the city. So there's a balancing process, I think, between what you repair, what you replace, the timing of those, and practical cash flow considerations. Even if the rate study's done, even if you do, I think those are all great thought processes, but still, the money that you're going to realize from any rate increases, should that be implemented, would be over time. So I, I think that there's a certain intention of Measure R being passed, that there's an interest in getting some of this work done. So I think it's a balance in, in those processes.
All right, so let's, let's, let's just, last one.
Yeah, just, I'm wondering if maybe we can, because we should give some direction. If, I think.
The direction is wait and see, I think.
Well, and maybe it's see if, if staff can strike that balance, right? Because we have, we, we need to be accountable to the residents to continue to see progress made on the streets.
Absolutely.
And if we can identify some of those streets that we think we can reasonably get to in the next couple of years, then maybe, you know, we, we make sure that we get that, that prioritized waters, sewer infrastructure done and schedule those streets accordingly. Like, I'm wondering if there's a balance that we can do there, and then.
Absolutely, and I think that's going to come back at some point.
Yeah.
But this is just a financing piece. So gentlemen, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you. I think we, let's just move on from this topic. We just don't have any consensus on this, and I think there's a lot of stuff that wasn't covered tonight that we need to revisit at a later time in terms of priorities like the council member mentioned. All right, let's go on to item number 11G, solar lights. We're almost there, we're almost there. Should we just let her go?
Pressed you've hung in there this long.
I think it's best for the public that you go home and rest. We still have a quorum, and you can watch them on TV. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate you making the effort, it was so important for you to be here. Julie says she's been coughing. Now we need some candy. Candy, like it's chocolate. Can't eat that anymore. All right, rest up, okay?
Okay, I will try and be brief with this. So we have been looking at the possibility of replacing some streetlights in the city with solar-powered streetlights, and part of the reason is because it's so expensive to replace streetlights in kind. So putting in new conduit, pulling new wire, putting in new footings, putting up, putting up new poles, and then the ongoing cost of, of power. So we, we thought we would take a look at, at solar power, solar-powered lighting for a small section of, of, of a street, that being 8th Street from Harvard to Main, and see what that would cost if we went with solar. And, but what we're really interested in is seeing what the council members think about the, the possibilities that we have been able to come up with at this time. So that segment you see is just a, that's, they actually did a, a lighting study to see how many lights it would take to correctly light that segment of street, and that's 14 lights staggered. 14 lights staggered on both sides of the road. This is what we currently have on Eighth Street. We have several poles that are missing completely. We have poles that are missing their, their acorns, their, their lights, and then we have poles that are still intact, but none of them are producing any light because the power, the power supply isn't functioning anymore. So, we don't have any lights that are actually working at this time. These are concrete poles. I don't know how old they are, older than me.
What is that thing around, is that solar panel?
That's a solar panel. Because the lights weren't working back right before Halloween last year, Public Works went out and put up these temporary lights that strap around the pole. There's a solar panel and a down-facing light so that kids who were out trick-or-treating would have some light. And they did that in, on, along Eighth. They also did Palm Court, I believe, in Santa Paula Street. So, you'll, you'll see those fixtures on these poles in those areas where lighting is no longer functioning. So, this is the current, kind of the current condition of, of Eighth Street. What we're, what we've been looking at is a, a solar-powered fixture that has a wraparound solar panel. So, in the, these are two different, two different companies, Clear World and Solucio, and Clear World is from, the company is, is based in Louisiana, and Solucio is based in the Netherlands. And, so you can see their, their products. The Clear World, what you see on top there is, that's called an acorn, and that's what we have here in the city, but that's an acorn with a cage and what's called a hat. And then Solucio doesn't have an acorn, they have what's called a lantern. So, they're slightly different products, but they function basically the same. Again, this is the coverage layout, 14 poles in that, in that two-block area. Common features between the two different styles or the two different brands, they are, they're 14-foot black fluted alum- aluminum poles. They have a black powder coat on them, and they have a, a base that is decorative. They have, they're very easily, easy to install because there's, you don't need conduit, you don't need wire, all you need is a footing, and with bolts sticking up, you bolt the light down and turn it on and you're in business. The, they have a wraparound solar panel, battery packs and controller inside the pole, so they're not accessible except through a, through a, an access panel that most people don't have the proper wrench for. They have a long-lasting LED lighting fixture and they automatically turn themselves on at night, when the sun goes down, they turn themselves back off when the sun comes up. And then during the night, they can be, you can set them so they will dim. In one case, you can, you can determine how much you want them to dim and when you want them to dim, in the other case, it's preset, you just live with what they, what they've, they've given you. But they do dim and that saves power and it also, you're cutting down on, on the brightness during hours when it's not really needed. They have replaceable components, so the poles are considered a lifetime pole unless they get run over. And so, when the, when the battery pack and the controller ends, you know, reaches the end of its useful life, then you just pull it out and put in a new one. Same thing with the light fixture and same thing with the, the solar panel. So, and they have different life expectancies, and it, it varies even between the two, the two companies. In a side-by-side look at them, looking at the solar array and how many watts it produces, the Clear World produces 320 watts and the Solucio produces 110 watts. It's about half, it's less than half, half as long. So, it's a, it's a much shorter panel. The LED lighting, Solucio's 20 watts, Clear World, Clear World is 50 watts. Battery life is significantly higher with the Clear World. The dimming is programmable versus just a preset default, and you can monitor via Bluetooth the, what's going on with the pro, with the, you can do the programming and you can also look at the condition and the life, of the life cycle of the, of the, the whole unit. And then, as I said, those are, that's where the provider locations are. Clear World has done forty, over 40 different cities, done lighting in 40 different cities in California, and they are working in, in states across the country.
Are any of these companies already here currently within the-
In, in the valley? I can find out. I don't believe so. I, I however, have been involved in a project with Clear World in, up at Clear Lake, and we, in one of our parks, we put, we put some, some of their lighting fixtures in along the edge of the park, along the roadway. So, what we're really interested in here is just getting your input on, you know, do you, do you like what you see? Do you want us to do something else? What would you, where would you like us to go with this?
Three of us were at a conference going, walking around and learning about all this stuff that's available for local governments. Sorry. That's available for local governments at a conference in Long Beach. And there was a solar company in particular that was working with the county of Ventura with the bike trail. Do you remember that solar company? I think we have the information, just to take a look at it as well.
Glad to.
Because they're working already with, with, with the county, so, on the bike trail thing.
The only thing about those, though, is they have the giant solar panel on top, which is very non-attractive for this particular application.
I believe they have a product similar to this.
I mean, if they have a product similar, they didn't have any of tho, any of those on display. The only ones they had on display had the giant-
Yeah, and they're a French company.
Panel on top.
But they have sales offices out here and we can, you know, if the direction is to move forward with the project, we'll make sure that they're included in-
Yeah, Councilmember Cornea.
I like the concept. It wouldn't hurt to see if there's another source, if they're coming in in the same price range or, or better. But I think of the two, the Clear World, it just seems to me that a streetlight needs more than 100 watts lighting to be safe and that triple the amount of output that you get on the one through Clear World would probably be worth that extra money, even though it's the more expensive one. But I, I like the concept to see if it can be done. I'm not sure, is it a budget item or a wish list item or, but anyway, that, I, I think if it were to work out, it is a good option because we've got this big problem of all these streets with the old lights that we can't afford to, to retrofit, so.
So, 400 to 500,000 dollars?
To, to do, to do Eighth, Eighth Street would be about 120,000 dollars. About 120,000.
So, it went to Measure T for 400 to 500,000 and I'm reading the analysis.
That was-
That's correct.
Not as a solar project, that was to rewire-
The lighting that was, yeah.
Right, which is why Measure T committee said, "No way." That's just too much money for one street in town, and council essentially concurred. I think, you know, and, and the reason we're before you tonight to get this direction is because this represents not only a, a different technology, but mostly a different, a slightly different aesthetic. And we didn't want to move forward with something that the community and council would hate and criticize, and so we felt it was important to have a public discussion about this, this type of option.
That brings to mind a question, does this style match, I don't want to ask Director Mason, the style that we're trying to achieve with our wayfinding?
Mr. Craftman.
How close to Craftsman is it? I guess maybe we could talk to the consult, I don't know.
Just a quick answer.
Pretty subjective question and answer, but I think it clearly has a more historic look than the remedy we have right now, so.
True. So, in terms of, I mean, I think it's an interesting concept, given that we're potentially years away from being able to do anything with the lights. It would definitely have to be something that people found aesthetically pleasing. And so, I'll tell you, I've heard more about how ugly people think the temporary solution is than just about anything else recently, other than lack of notification on when their streets were going to be paved. So, it would be something that, I, I know that this is technically a public meeting, but I can't imagine that most people are still up watching it at this point, and so it might be something where, you know, we put out, like, this is kind of what we're thinking and just get a temperature, once we know, sort of like, they're, like, here's two options.
Three.
Or three, you know, like, put out, like, which do you gravitate towards if we were gonna, just aesthetically, I don't know, just something to think about for something like this?
The other option would be do this segment of Eighth, Eighth Street, it's not that much money, see how we like the lighting, the effect, see what kind of feedback we get. Because we can ask people to look at a, a picture, but that's not the same as, as an experience. And if the experience proves good and the feedback is positive, then we can look to put it elsewhere.
Right.
If it's not, then we got to go back to the drawing board. That would be another way to approach it.
Mr. Mason?
Just one thing to that point, kind of our low-hanging fruit on this is what are we doing from the standpoint of lighting and safety along the corridor? And I think that, that's kind of where we start on this and, because it desperately needs to get done.
Oh, and I, I think we all agree on that. I was just wondering if, I mean, because I think the pole part itself is pretty, they pretty much, you know, you do a little decorative thing at the bottom and you've got the black pole, but the acorns, some of them are more attractive than others. Some of them just look funny. None of them look exactly like what we have, right? And so, that's where I was, I was just wondering if it would make sense to-
The Clear World picture that's in your packet, it's a little different than-
Right, and I guess that's what-
The cage.
They all look a little different.
Right, it's probably the closest to what we have.
There was another, except that ours aren't so, the acorn part isn't so, like, that one looks ridiculous.
This is after the question and answer pictures.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I don't like the top of that one.
So, that one, that is just a plain acorn. But if we go back one slide, the, this, this is representation from Clear, Clear World lighting of what their luminaire, luminaires can look like. So, you see just a plain acorn on the left and then you have an acorn with a hat, and that's more like what you see out on the streets. And then, and then you see a cage, and then you see a cage with a hat, so it gets, they get more complicated. There's a lot of different options. What we put in up at Clear Lake was a brazo, looks like a shepherd's crook with a lamp hanging down, and so it really directs the light down onto the ground rather than letting it bleed out to the sides.
Which is another option, but it really changes course from what's downtown.
Yeah.
Although, it is what exists around the train depot and the Plaza Park, and it's also what exists now out at the Harvest. It's, it's something to consider because it casts less light on the adjoining residents.
Right.
Not a problem on Main Street, but, because you don't mind the, the buildings being lit up, but in residential neighborhoods, it can be preferable to light the street and not light the homes.
I go for it. Obviously, the best case scenario would be if we could restore these to operating condition, because they're so historic, but obviously that's cost prohibitive. What's your intent with the existing poles? What are you going to do with those?
The poles that we would take down on Eighth Street? I am not sure what we would do with those. I haven't thought that far ahead.
I mean, because if you're going to keep them, when would you ever repurpose them without rewiring them and getting all the components? But I'm sure there might be a market for people to buy them as historic.
There might be.
Auction them or something.
The, the, the nice thing about this kind of option is that all you have to do, you remove the old pole, if you're, if you're not putting it back in the same place, then you, you patch that piece of concrete, you go where you need to place the new pole, cut a two-foot by two-foot square, bore down four feet, hang your rebar and fill the hole up with concrete and put in your, your bolts, and then let it cure, and then you cap that with, you know, concrete level with the, with the sidewalk and you bolt down your new pole. You don't have to worry about anything else. Just get the footing in place, bolt down your pole and you're in business. And so, the installation cost is about 500 dollars per pole, which is fairly cheap. And, and so, what we do with the old poles, yeah, we could see if there's a market for them, there might be, it, it might be, but what we have in the ground to service those poles, the conduit and the, the wire, that's where we have the problem right now. We still have fixtures that would probably work if we had conduit and wire that could bring them power.
That's it, thank you.
Would, would you mind looking into that third option we saw at the convention? Because they're working currently with the county, maybe figure out how that's going with the county, because it's going to be, it's part of the bike trail.
I'd be glad to do that.
Have a conversation with them to see if there's some comparable product or even talk to the county individuals so that, to see what they, how they're, obviously they're working now.
Right.
But how their, their relationship is with the company.
Also, at last year's league conference in Long Beach, we stopped by a vendor downer.
That's the same one.
Same one, okay. Thanks.
I think I have business card, I'll send it to you.
I just want to be clear that I like the idea of it being wrapped around the pole better than the panel on top, because those looked pretty ridiculous.
That, and then the number of watts, too, for functionality, and I wouldn't even be against looking at the, the other style. If, if the Huntsman group thought that that would match Clark, the Craftsman look, it wouldn't hurt either, but I, I'd be open to those, but I think that the, the brightness of it matters. I think 100 watts is not going to be enough for a street, I don't think, so.
So, just to be clear on this, the, the solar array on this side-by-side comparison, that's how much power the solar panel produces. Not how much the light. You have a 20-watt light on that fixture, 20 watt. That's about the, that's about, but, but it's different with LEDs than it is with, with a regular incandescent bulb. So, you get, you get a lot more light, but you're comparing a 20-watt light to a 50-watt light.
And also there was-
So, it's more than twice as much light.
There was an option, have like a, a yellowish color for animal-friendly or critter-friendly? I remember reading that, but anyway, I think a brighter one would, we should be looking at.
The paint would match, if we're doing like the trash cans, right? Or the signage or?
It would be black.
Oh, it'd be black.
Black powder coat.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know, it's possible that they could do something else if we ordered enough, but just getting 14 fixtures, I don't know if we, they would-
Oh, okay.
Paint them a different color for it.
Well, and the one thing about the black is that it would, yeah, it would blend in better with the solar panels, because normally I would say, oh, oil-rubbed bronze or something pretty, but, which is closer to the trash cans.
Yeah.
And more historic. However, I, I think that the solar panels would then look-
The panel has to be black.
Yeah, since the panels are going to be black, it probably would make more sense for the poles to be black.
So, you have enough direction, you can bring this back on consent?
If somebody can help me with the name of the other company.
Yeah, I have the card on my desk, I'll get it to you.
That would be great. Yes, I have plenty of direction, thank you.
So, if, if council's comfortable, we will plan to move forward with a pilot project, we'll obviously put it out to bid, and it, it will come back to you before we, you know, sign up so that you're approving it. And we can do some public outreach at that time to make sure residents along the Eighth Street corridor are aware.
All right.
And, and it just might be helpful to think through, since the other areas are more historic, that ideally, we would have all of those matched, since they do now. So, just to keep that in mind, as we look at the, what might be on the pilot.
All right, let's move on to item 11E, draft city council to your strategic plan.
Right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, and members who are still
left in the audience. Staff comes before you this evening for receiving final feedback and direction on the draft strategic plan for 2025, 2027, ahead of a final adoption via resolution. Just to make, make things easy for this evening, just a high-level overview of the process. We began this process in January, had a very robust community engagement and public meeting sessions, sessions with not only the council, the executive team, members of the public. And then, we've had iterations through the business roundtable sessions, and then also some public comments that we took during those sessions. The key framework of the strategic plan has been outlined in the report in your packet this evening. Staff included the updated categories and information taken in during those workshops. So, in your packet, you'll see this evening, the updated vision, mission, and then additional core values, that we spent a decent amount of time working through during the workshops. Excuse me. Additionally, you'll note, the categories have been reduced from seven, down to six strategic categories, which cover items such as infrastructure, economic development, public safety, healthy community, arts and culture, and operational excellence. And you'll also notice in your Exhibit A, when staff now laid out the, kind of the final draft before you, at your last meeting, you provided feedback that you wanted some of those categories rearranged, you wanted the infrastructure items up at the top category, followed by economic development, and then public safety, followed by the rest of the categories. You have 49 total objectives currently in the draft plan. Many of those items either align with the general plan, housing element, or other policy documents. And then, council, staff has done a, their due diligence and work with the directors and the finance department, and putting together your two-year budget, to try and make sure that the resources going into the next two years, from a budgeting perspective, fairly aligned, for the most part, with your strategic plan. That's outlined in the exhibit. You can see those items have been color-coded in green, for items that either have, the majority of funding has been suggested or recommended in your budget. And even though the budget hasn't been adopted at this point, we're, we're pretty much there. So, before it comes back to you for final adoption, staff will double-check those particular categories, to make sure that they're in alignment with your upcoming budget adoption. And then, lastly, staff also did go through and categorize the areas per your recommendation in terms of staff capacity, so that is also notated in that category. It's staff's intention that we will come back to you in the near future here, probably the July 2nd meeting, with the kind of resident-facing, marketable version of your strategic plan. But, tonight, before you, we're here to receive any additional final feedback and recommendations, before we take that to the kind of, to the printer, as they say. So, staff would be happy to answer any questions.
When we go to the printer, can you make sure there's a pie chart to show where the investments are, based on these six areas? I think it's helpful to see how we prioritize, like, infrastructure and the percentage of, obviously, funding.
Based on the, the budgeted dollar numbers? Okay.
It sends a message, I think, that we've invested in these major priorities. Yeah.
Can you just make sure on each of these categories, like, some of the stuff in green, I'm not sure if it's all 100% budgeted, but then it was in green, like, maybe it is? For example, A2, for the, it has $1 million. I don't know if we actually have a million in the budget, or if that's just the million to accomplish all of the tasks and metrics. So, again...
That is $1 million that has been set aside from the bond proceeds, the bond savings, really, from the wastewater, or, no, the water refinancing that was done.
Oh, for solar.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, it's not covering everything on the metrics.
Right.
It's...
It would just be for a major solar project.
Gotcha. So, I don't know if maybe on some of those, if we could clarify then, because it looks like, that's the amount for all of the tasks?
Right.
And so, maybe in the description, on fiscal year one, it clarifies that that's for a solar?
Yeah.
And then, I had a question in that first section, on, well, two, two more questions. It says rail corridor beautification, and it lists $500,000. Is that money that we have a grant for, or, where is that?
I believe was that the development funds that we were receiving, possibly? Mr. Mason?
No, this was the estimate of what it would likely take to focus on beautification of the corridor from 10th Street to the creek.
So, then, should this not be green?
Well, so, we believe, because of the bike trail project, and the funding that we're not only seeking, but just received from VCTC, that there's a high likelihood that beautification efforts would be included as part of any trail extension. So, it's probably, there's probably not enough dedicated funding for this, at this time, but we think we can achieve it, so...
Highly likely.
Yeah, maybe it should be a different color than green.
Or, so, maybe we need to clarify that green is stuff that we think is achievable, as opposed to funded? Because I think that's where I was going through here, and I'm going, well, if I'm a member of the public, I'm going, well, why are you spending $5,000, $500,000 of city money on that, when I might want it to go to streets? Right? So, I think that's where I was, as I was reading through this, I was trying to read it as someone who might be, you know, casually looking at it, because you come to it pretty quickly in the document. And so, I wanted, it might, we might want to be clear, if we're going to highlight things, that we are sort of clear on what the color is, and if...
Well, and keep, and keep in mind, the final plan won't have color coding.
Correct.
And, so, it'll identify if there's a budget impact, and we can just be clearer about that.
Okay, yeah, so I think that just, on all of these, Ben, in whatever the final version is, if we could just sort of double-check, if there's a budget impact, it's already budgeted in its general fund, or one of the Measure T things, versus, we're going to seek grants or alternative funding. That would, I think, that would just be helpful for the public viewing the document. And then, on mobility, I had a question, where we came up with the $26,000?
Yes, so, Councilmember Crossway, so, I researched and looked into this, in talking both with our Public Works Director, and then the City Engineer as well, it looks like it was just actually an error, in moving one of the cells over. So, this one would just strictly require staff time.
And, and, because I think then it should be green. And, and part of the reason why I really called this out, is that this is something that VCTC has already done on all the planning, they're supposed to be starting to do public outreach soon. I just want us to be involved, because what it entails is looking at the potential expansion of the bus routes in Santa Paula, which does ultimately, that's something that we pay for, out of the funding that comes for, or, through TDA, or whatever fund it's through. And so, I just want us to be engaged and involved, and helping with, let the public know, when, once the plan has been officially released, that it's there, maybe having them do a presentation to council, you know, that kind of, just so that the public is aware of the conversation, and they can weigh in, before suddenly bus stations pop, bus stops pop up all over town, and they go, wait a second, that's where I parked my car, or, or, I'm so excited, I'm going to be able to get on the bus there. Right? Whatever side of the conversation, I just want to make sure that everyone is aware and involved, as the process goes, and it doesn't come as a surprise if the routes change.
Good news is, Mr. Goodman and I are both a part of multiple VCTC committees now, so...
It's gone.
Oh.
Is there anything else that's missed? Or are we all good?
The only other question I had, I think, was the regional employment versus business attraction, like, right now, business attraction and the welcome toolkit is in yellow, and that was something, it's B7. And I know that that was something that we had talked about. And then, also, B8, I thought we were already working on the retail vacancy potential solutions. So, I was just curious on those two, since they were in yellow, is sort of like, maybe not as feasible. I was just curious about that.
I can answer to B7, the only reason is because we haven't, we were still waiting on final numbers for the budget, so that's becoming a lot clearer now. So, you know, as I mentioned, before we bring to you your final version for adoption, one, it won't have the colors, and we'll do a better job of articulating which items, you know, are funded.
For, for example, the $20,000 that's being requested for economic development-related activities, some of that could go towards this toolkit.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, since it was yellow, that didn't mean, because I think this was something that we really had lifted up as a priority, to make sure that we were ready to engage with potential businesses. I know I was reading the report from the business representative for SCAG, because I have that meeting first thing in the morning, and she was saying in her report, that some of the businesses that had really backed off of, especially in the retail space, of any expansion, some of those are now looking to expand, and so, she was really encouraging cities to be ready, you know, to, to know how you would engage with them, and to be welcoming, and to be able to tell your story. And so, I just, you know, if there are any of those opportunities, I just want to make sure that we're, we're ready for them.
And then, Councilmember Crossway, to address the B8, the only reason it was in yellow is because it's really, it is in the process of being worked on right now, with Mr. Mason and myself. It's just, there's unknown factors, we just don't know costs, you know, what, what it's going to look like, how everything's going to turn out, so we can't really give you a number right now.
Were there any other questions?
I think those were my main questions.
Are we ready to approve tonight? Yeah, okay.
We have talked, this on operational excellence in F2, I think, that you did have, you're removing funding for the employee engagement survey, and that was going to end up being about, about $40,000 or so, taken out of one bucket and used for that, is what my understanding was earlier this evening. So, I just wanted to know if that's something that's a priority, or how that's going to be handled, or, seems like we've done an awful lot with employees already this last...
I think one of the things that I mentioned at the last meeting was, it's an issue of timing, because we're in the midst of all this labor negotiation, all these investments, and we don't want to take the temperature right now. Let's take the temperature once these things have gone into place.
Or perhaps do it Y2, or something like that.
Yeah, Y2 versus Y1.
And maybe use half of the funds, if it, well, depending on what the actual cost of what the project would be. Because I think, again, there was a bucket that took 238 out each year, so $46, $47,000. So, maybe we could move it to Y2 in a lesser amount.
I think...
F2, operational excellence.
Just clarify, Council...
F2, item, F2, item three.
Councilmember Cornejo, there's, there's two items at play that might have been, I didn't see the slides earlier myself. You have the succession, or continuity kind of planning, which is in a separate bucket. And then, you had the employee engagement survey, which we've kind of tested the market to see what that would come in at, and that's about $20,000, that effort. But, to the Mayor's point, the City Manager and I have already discussed, kind of at length, that, you know, we wouldn't actually even move forward with, considering kicking off the actual survey until sometime later.
Okay, so then, maybe just adjust the year, or something.
Just move it to Y2.
Yeah, move it to Y2, or something, then, so...
Well, we, I mean, we wouldn't recommend moving the monies allocated in the budget into year two, unless council feels strongly about that. I think the sooner we get feedback from our employees about our working environment, and our morale, and all of that, the better. We just don't want to do it this summer, on the heels of labor negotiations and everything else. And to the Mayor's point, waiting until later in the year would be desirable, unless the council would prefer that we wait altogether.
Have you already been having any meetings about that?
We met with our entire management team. We were prepared to do this about seven or eight months ago, and the conclusion of the management team was that we wouldn't get a high-level participation, and it wouldn't be genuine participation, if we were doing it internally, and that we really should seek a third party. And in the research that Mr. Royas did, we learned that most of our fellow cities use a third party, and there's a number of vendors that we've already been in contact with, to find out how they do it, what they do, and what the pricing's like. And they help you in the development of the survey, so that it's also a bit more proven than us just trying to ask questions, you know?
Yeah, I just, I'll be, I'll be curious in watching how that comes out, because you just, you don't know if it's going to be information you can't use anyway, or tells you something you already knew anyway, so, anyway, I don't want to go into a long discussion about that, but I, I just know that it looks like we had the funding from it, taken out of something else that we were talking about earlier today, it was on the...
Well, and keep in mind, some of that, some of that engagement money, and also the professional services, drops down quite a bit in year two.
Right, okay.
So...
Okay. Don't need to beat it up here, though, but just want to bring it up, thanks.
Are we ready to adopt?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, you, you actually won't be making a motion, it's just to provide feedback, so unless there's any additional feedback, then staff will come back to you in another meeting or two, with the adopting resolution and the final product.
All right, well, thank you very much. City Managers' Report?
Yes, I will do the Department Report in 60 seconds or less, and you can time me, but I do want to point out, I'm really pleased with the volume of activity that all of the administration has performed over these last four months. This is from January through May, you have five pages worth of detail, so I'm not going to repeat all of it. Obviously, we're knee-deep into budget, MOUs, strategic planning, and a lot of that has fallen on my department, Finance Department, Deputy City Manager, and a lot that's been achieved. We were also proud to go out to Washington DC with the Mayor, and have been actively meeting with our legislators, as we continue to advocate for things important to Santa Paula. And the other thing I would like to highlight is just, and you'll see it on page 11 in your packet, how effective our management fellows have been. They have gotten so involved with so much, that they are truly doing the work of, you know, full-time employees managing our social media, implementing our ADA compliance on our website, uploading our council meetings now to YouTube, which was a request we got from a resident, analyzing our water subsidy possible programs, managing bilingual, our monthly bilingual newsletter, all of that. So, I just wanted to highlight those things. So I just wanted to highlight those things. And not to have anyone else overlooked, our city clerks also processed 21 council meetings and agendas, done a lot, including all of those committees that you guys did interviews for and made appointments for, processed 107 public records requests, which has greatly impacted all of our organization. And our HR and IT divisions have been busy at work as well. That will conclude my four-month update, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah.
Just a quick question of concern. Is there any chance that the fellows program might be defunded in the future, or are we still looking good on that?
We are looking pretty good for at least this next year. I'll let Mr. Royas quickly respond, because he's been in touch with, with Washington.
Yeah, just like many programs that are federally funded, they were impacted at certain levels, at the national AmeriCorps level, but not in particular with the Lead to, Lead for America program-
Oh, great.
-in particular. One thing, of course, that has been funneled down, of course, is just making sure, you know, what types of activities they're allowed to work on, you know, making sure that we're in compliance with that, of course.
Yeah, great, okay, that's good. I'd heard that about overriding organizations, so I'm glad to hear.
Yeah.
They did make cuts.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, they're just so thrilled. I mean, I think we're kind of like the poster child for them now. And of course, as I'm sure the city manager shared with you earlier, next year again, we'll have two and a half, essentially three fellows, so.
That's good news. Thanks, I appreciate that.
All right. City council reports? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. On Thursday, May 29th, I attended the Business Roundtable at the Glen Tavern. It was well-attended. The, also on the 29th, there was, I went on the mayor's behalf to the two-by-two meeting with the school board, they talked about, and I think we saw in the paper, about the Isabella Project going out to Briggs School Area, and also the progress they've made with, working with the, our parks and rec and the summer camps. On Sunday, the 1st, there was a fundraiser at the Wilson Ranch, and it was put on for Hearts Without Borders. Borders? Yes. Basically, it was to raise money for families that are impacted by someone picked up by ICE and the breadwinner is gone, to help with any financial needs they might have. It was, I think, at least like 100 people there. On Tuesday, the 3rd, myself and the mayor attended the homeless and housing meeting where we talked about, let me see, well, the current projects that they have for temporary housing. And then, of course, the chief talked about some of the issues affecting the police department and our unhoused people. Tomorrow, I want to remind the public that we have a senior advisory committee, and I believe we still have one vacancy. Yeah. So if anybody's interested. This Friday will be a cruise night. It'll be a solo artist named Jacob Marquez who's going to be performing. And just a reminder again, that if you're available on Monday, the 16th, here in front of City Hall at 1:00 PM, there'll be the opening of the Time Capsule, which is buried right out here in the front yard. So that should be, lasts about an hour. So Monday, the 16th at 1:00 PM. And that's my report.
Sign of light. You got it.
All right. I will try to be brief since it's late. But I did want to let you all know, at my last VCTC meeting, the decision was made to decommission all of the call boxes in the counties. There will be no more call boxes. It was a very long discussion. It took a couple of different meetings. The long story short is that the sole proprietor who now owns every single call box, the right to every single call box in the entire country, has been refusing to maintain them, which is part of the contract, and is basically like, hmm, go pound sand, you can't go to anyone else because we got the, they managed to get the permissions and the patents and everything for all of the technology. And there is no other existing options at this point. So transportation commissions throughout the state are starting to decommission their call boxes. So just letting everyone know that you will start to see bags over the top of the call boxes, and then they will be physically removed. One thing to know is that everywhere, the call boxes already operate on solar, or no, solar, sorry, cell. So anywhere that there is currently a call box, your cell phone should also work if you have one. There are still dead spots throughout the county where your cell phone won't work. There wouldn't have been a call box there anyway. So, so there was some, you know, the commission wasn't excited about this probability, but they, the call boxes also were not being maintained anymore because the company wasn't doing it. We don't have that expertise or extra money. So what's going to be put in place, or what they're going to be exploring, is once the money has been spent to take those out, they're going to be looking at expanding the freeway service patrol to cover more, so the roving tow trucks that will tow you for free off the freeway. They're going to be looking to expand that program with those dollars, as opposed to having the call boxes. And I've asked if they study the possibility of looking at the 126 as one of the corridors. It's currently not included in that program. And they said that the last time they had looked at it, there wasn't enough traffic to justify it. But I told them with all of the increased, anyway, there seems to be a lot more traffic than in 2017, the last time they studied it. So I requested that they take some time to relook at that as they look to expand the roving tow truck program. That took longer than I intended, but that was the most key thing. There was other stuff that we talked about, but I will move on. The, at our legislative meeting for the Southern California Association of Governments, we were informed about the Affordable Housing Bond that the state is looking to put on the ballot in 2026. So I just want to make you all aware of that. They're looking at a $10 billion bond that would go on the 2026 ballot. At the Heritage Valley, Heritage Valley Policy Advisory Committee meeting, we got to see the brand-new buses, so you'll start seeing those around, both on the Dial-A-Ride and for the fixed route buses. So the new fleet has arrived, and it's branded with new logos, so keep an eye out for those. They seem really nice inside. And then for, I missed our last meeting because I was with the Southern California Association of Governments in Washington DC, and we were advocating on behalf of funding for the Olympics, the Community Development Block Grant, which is slated to be completely taken away. We were looking at FEMA slash the BRIC program in particular, which is building resilient infrastructure in communities. But all of those ways that we have funding to plan for and respond to extreme weather events, a lot of that is on the chopping block. We also were talking about freight planning, because freight is constantly moving all around our region, including Inventor County, and there's not good sources of funding for looking at how you improve that circulation. And then we were also talking about the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, which is also at risk of defunding. And then at the CalCog meeting, which is the California Council of Governments, we were talking about the Cap'n Trade, or Cap'n Invest, as they are talking about maybe renaming it. The state is trying to get that done for the reauthorization by the end of this fiscal year and, or legislative cycle, I guess, not fiscal year, legislative cycle. It got a little tricky with the may revise. There's some things that the governor is saying that he wants to see that money spent on, and not everyone agrees that everything that he's wanting to prioritize should be in Cap'n Trade funding. So that's going to be an ongoing conversation, but just wanted to give you that update. And then the, there were several members of the, of CalCog that expressed concerns about SB 79, so it's probably something that we should keep an eye on. CalCities and a bunch of other organizations have been opposing it. I know that it has been revised since it was originally released. I'm not sure where it's at now. But in some of the original versions, there was some really concerning language. So just something for us to, to watch. And then in terms of more fun things, we had the 63rd Annual Chamber Awards. I attended the Coffee with a Cop at Park 1055, and the Police Memorial Event. The Special Olympics Torch Run happened this week, which was great to see our police department participating and raising funds for the Special Olympics. We had more, I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, and then I had the opportunity to attend the Santa Paula High School Senior Awards Night to present the SCAG Scholarship to Sofia Monzano. One student from the entire county was chosen to receive that scholarship, and we had a Santa Paula student that received it. So that is my report.
Councilmember Cornejo.
Thank you, Mayor. I was out of country for a couple of weeks, and so my report will be quite short. But I did attend the VCOG meeting in Camarillo. They hold their meetings at the, at the library. And did present on behalf of the mayor and our city council, a certificate of recognition to the retiring executive director, Hugh Riley, who many people know all the great work that he's done for our county and our government. So it was very touching, and his wife was there, and they presented flowers and all. At the same meeting, they did issue the final report and study on the broadband study. And I don't know if we've received, did we receive a copy here? If not, I will make sure, you did get it, you were supposed to. But there's some very good information, not only county-wide, but specifically about Santa Paula. So I will bring it soon, so that you can all see our section of that information. It's very, very good information. And attended the Coffee with a Cop as well, so that's it. Thanks.
Okay. It's late in the night, so as always, I gave my written report after every quarter. But I do just want to point out two things. Earlier this week, I was able to participate with the county. The Board of Supervisors gave a proclamation in honor of Pride Month. And then this past weekend, I was able to participate with Guadalupe Church, earlier Guadalupe, at the Santonilla Tocha event that took place. And just very exciting to be there as part of their procession, so. All right. And when we move along to agenda item, future agenda items, do we have anything?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only thing I would like to point out is I think we'll possibly need either, you know, study session with the budget at the next meeting and/or maybe an additional special session to approve the budget. So we'll be in touch with all of you, but we're nearing the finish line. So by the end of June, everyone can take a breather for sure. We also tentatively anticipate a possible discussion before the July 2nd meeting to revisit your protocols, your procedural guidelines.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Have a good night, and I adjourn this meeting at 10:31.